Mr. Sergeant at Arms, would you please call our February 7th, 2023 meeting to order? I would like to recognize our Chaplain of the Day, Reverend Joshua Narcisse, Spiritual Care Director of Church Health Center. He's invited by Councilman Morgan today. The prayer will be followed immediately by the Pledge of Allegiance. Reverend Narcisse, will you please lead us in prayer?
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Let us join our hearts in prayer. God, we give you thanks that when our eyes fluttered open this morning, you greeted us with the gift of new mercies. We give you thanks that you granted us grace enough to make it to this moment. And God, we do give you thanks that you are continuing to call women and men to govern with wisdom and understanding. God, grant that this body, as they continue to discern and deliberate, grant them the wisdom that only you can give, and deepen the level of understanding of every comment that is shared, presentation that is made, every resolution that is offered, and ordinance that is read. God, we know that you alone are God of the conscience, and so we pray that you would grant this council, and indeed all those who call Memphis home, the wisdom and the courage we need to face this present hour. Save us, God, from the allure of weak resignation, to the evils that so easily beset us. And God, give us endurance, the endurance and the will to care for one another. Help us to make justice our common aim. God, bind us to the way of mercy, and remind us in each moment that love is our only hope for all of these things, and indeed those concerns that reside in the quietness of our hearts where no human hand can touch. We ask that you would tend to them with the tenderness with which you tend to our very lives. It's in the name of the one who is closest to us that we do pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Councilman Morgan.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Reverend Joshua Narcisse. Many of y'all, not unlike myself, may not know Reverend Joshua. He comes to us, a young man from Queens, New York, through Yale to Memphis, and he has been in our community now, coming up on his fourth year, and he serves as the Spiritual Guide and Director at the Church Health Center. If you're not familiar with the Church Health Center, they serve about 60,000 Memphians and patients on a yearly basis. They're the largest, I believe, primary caregiver in the mid-south area, and the largest nonprofit faith-based caregiver in the country. They do incredible work in caring for the sick and the needy, and where they are on a daily basis. And Reverend, I just want to say thank you on behalf of the Memphis City Council for the work you do there. Welcome to Memphis, if it hadn't been said enough already, and we look forward to the work that you're going to set to here, both with your hands and in the hearts and souls of our community. Thank you so much for opening us in prayer today.
Reverend Narcisse, welcome to Memphis. Mr. Morgan acknowledged your Yale affiliation, but he didn't mention that you are BISA, as am I. Well, welcome to Memphis, my friend. Madam Comptroller, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Canali, Carlisle, Colvette, Easter Thomas, Ford, Johnson, Logan, Morgan, Robinson, Vice Chairman Smiley, Swearingen Washington.
Present.
Councilmember Warren.
Present.
Chairman Jones. Mr. Chairman, you have a call.
Thank you. I believe Vice Chairman Smiley has read the minutes from our January 24th meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Travis. When I move the adoption of the January 24th minute meetings.
Electronically has been moved and seconded by Councilman Warren. Seeing no members in the queue to speak on this item, Madam Comptroller, will you please prepare the screen toward the vote?
Canali, yes. Carlisle, yes. Easter Thomas, yes. Johnson, yes. Vice Chairman Smiley, yes. Swearingen Washington, yes. Warren, yes. Chairman Jones, yes. Councilmember Ford, yes. Councilmember Logan, yes.
Okay, thank you. That item passes. Welcome to the February 7th, 2023 meeting of the Memphis City Council. Comment cards are available for members of the public wishing to be heard on a specific item. Our Sergeant at Arms has agendas up front. Please be mindful that all cards must be completed in their entirety, including the item number you wish to speak on. Cards that do not include an item number or are left blank will be held until the end of the meeting for the General Comments section. All of those wishing to speak on an item must turn in a card, must turn in a comment card to the Sergeant at Arms before the item is called. As Chair, I will only recognize citizens that properly registered to speak by submitting a completed comment card to our Sergeant at Arms. Madam Comptroller, items three and four have been held for two weeks, so they'll be heard on February 21st. Item number 17 will be held until our March 7th meeting. And so those items will not be heard today, but on March, February 21st and March 7th. Madam Comptroller, will you please call item number two, please?
Item number two is a resolution honoring New Hope Christian Academy. This resolution is sponsored by Councilwoman Easter Thomas.
Councilwoman Easter Thomas, you're recognized.
Good afternoon, colleagues.
Good afternoon.
And city of Memphis. I am proud to present this honorary resolution to New Hope Christian Academy, celebrating their 25th anniversary in the Memphis community and now in the Frazier community. So I will read this in so that we can congratulate you on today. Whereas noteworthy anniversaries arise, the Memphis City Council will honor institutional places of learning within our great city as we celebrate New Hope Christian Academy located at 3000 University Street in the Frazier community of Memphis, Tennessee. The academy being founded in 1995, New Hope recently celebrated its 25th anniversary and is widely known as the best-kept secret in Frazier. Which started in the heart of downtown Memphis with only 27 students, has now grown to over 420 students ranging from third to sixth grades, and this institution thriving on three principles: teaching, learning, and discipleship. New Hope Christian Academy partners with donors to make quality Christian education affordable and accessible for all children, despite parents' ability to pay. The beauty of New Hope is that its affordable tuition and the majority of families receive assistance, with 99% of students graduating from high school. I'll say that again, with 99% of students graduating from high school, 98% graduating from college. With students enrolled from across 43 ZIP codes, with 69% of graduates having received or pursuing post-secondary education. Through teaching, hands-on learning, and Christ-centered discipleship, New Hope strives to equip each child with the necessary tools to pursue a college education and serve as God's image bearers, and place a unique emphasis on the immediate community in which the school was located and develop long-lasting relationships. Now therefore be it resolved, the Memphis City Council joins in honoring and celebrating the 25th anniversary of New Hope Christian Academy by providing faith-based education within the community of Frazier and to the city of Memphis with love and respect to the students and educators. Though ink and parchment are most inadequate, to highlight such educational achievements and dedication to students, we nonetheless offer these words with sincere respect and gratitude as we honor and celebrate New Hope Christian Academy's 25th anniversary. Please join me, you all, in congratulating New Hope on 25 years.
So I know you've got a very full agenda, but first and foremost, thank you so much, Commissioner, and then also Commissioners, thank you for just taking the time out to recognize us. And you guys are certainly doing great work in the city, and we just continue to pray for you, and we are doing our part in Frazier just to make Memphis great through teaching, learning, and discipleship. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, County Commissioners. We appreciate you, and hopefully with your love and support, City Council members, hopefully with your love and support, we will continue to celebrate 25 more years of excellence in Frazier.
And you so move, Councilwoman Easter Thomas? Okay. That item has been moved and seconded, and Madam Comptroller, will you show that that item has been approved by acclamation?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It's so noted.
Councilwoman Swearingen Washington.
Chairman, I would like to make a motion to suspend the rules to add a resolution honoring Universal Circus.
Okay, it has been moved and seconded, that we will suspend the rules. If there's no objection, the rules will be suspended, so we can add item number 33 as a resolution to honor the Universal Circus. So Councilwoman Swearingen Washington, you are recognized, and we are now hearing item number 33.
Universal Circus, come on down. Bringing a little sunshine to the city council. I am ecstatic because the Universal Circus is in District 4, in the heart of District 4 at Liberty Park. We have a resolution that we would like to present to you all at this time, and you look fantastic. I've seen the show, and it's just absolutely amazing. You all will have to go out and look at it. Whereas, when worthy circumstances arise, the Memphis City Council has seen fit to honor organizations that have served this community. Whereas on February 2nd, 2023, the Universal Circus opened in Memphis to celebrate 29 years of its existence. It was established in 1994 in Atlanta, Georgia by Cedric Walker for the purpose of showcasing the broad spectrum of talents of Black performers and using history and culture to create a unique concept in entertainment. And whereas, it shall be noted that Universal Circus is further distinguished through its combination of interactive circus acts, theater, and music. Its exhibition of the circus is fresh, enterprising, venturesome, and embraces and celebrates the divergent aspects of global urban pop culture by bringing its center stage with an adept and artistic cast of international performers that reflect the cultural diversity of the world in which we live. And whereas the Universal Circus has grown significantly since its inception and has been enjoyed by over 25 million people with over a total of 15,000 shows performed. It has been featured in an Emmy-awarding special in 1998, and its first international tour in South Africa in 2001, and earned accolades for its hip-hop "Under the Big Top" from renowned media sources as The Wall Street Journal, People, Vanity Fair, Newsweek, The New York Times, Essence, The Washington Post, Parade, and Southern Living. And whereas numerous accolades aside, Universal Circus has also played an active part in the community. It established Universal Cares, which is comprised of its nationwide initiatives such as Family Open House, which is dedicated to spreading awareness of homelessness of families and children within their local community, and providing these affected individuals with an opportunity to share a moment of enjoyment during their transitionary period. The collaborative partnership with DKMS to spread awareness and continue the fight The collaborative partnership with DKMS to spread awareness and continue the fight against blood cancer and blood disorders in the underrepresented African-American community. The Universal Humanitarian Award, which recognizes individuals in the entertainment industry who have used their platforms to make contributions that improve the quality of family life through social, educational, and technological initiatives within their communities. And the Universal Circus Food was a sole program that helps to stock local food banks that serve to support low-income and homeless families. Whereas the success of Universal Circus is not no part accidental, this historic institution has showcased its excellence from very beginning, in large part due to the hard work and dedication of its founder Cedric Walker. And whereas the Memphis City Council honors those whose efforts reflect our community's best qualities, we now seek to commemorate Universal Circus and its present and historical attributes, which have led to it being an invaluable institution globally. Now therefore be it resolved that Universal Circus and the enduring legacy of its founder be collectively recognized for their long-lasting success, we entreat citizens of Memphis to welcome these skilled performers and enjoy the magic of soul, given by my hand under the great seal of the city of Memphis on the 7th day of February. Jana Swerengen-Washington, Memphis City Council, District Four. Thank you so much. Yes, you may.
And you so move?
And I so move.
Thank you. Thank you to the great city of Memphis. We are here. On behalf of the Universal Circus, I can't begin to tell you how elated and happy we are to be in the great city of Memphis, with such a collective and talented amount of acts and talent under the big top. We stay true to our message of spreading the love of spirit and joy and hope. Even in the tough times under the big top, we share what we do best by bringing smiles to the faces, and by Memphis being one of our number-one cities to perform in. It's been four years, we've been sold out almost every night. We want to see you guys there with your families, friends, and we want to give you and spread the joy and love and hope and share with you so that we are going to put smiles on every face of every citizen of Memphis under the big top. Thank you so much, Memphis, and thank you for having us.
Sir, how long will Universal be here?
We will be here till the--so sorry, let me bring on someone more attractive than I am. Cheyenne, would you come?
Oh, you right about there.
Good day, everyone. My name is Cheyenne. I'm from Trinidad and Tobago, and I am one of the ringmasters at the Universal Circus. And as you guys were told before, we are here to give you guys the message that we all belong. As you see this beautiful cast behind me, we have people from all over the world who come under the big top to make sure that once you get into that tent, you feel the love, you feel the energy, you feel the vibe, and you become one of the members of the most interactive circus in the entire world. And we ensure no matter how old, no matter how young, you don't just come as a spectator, you become a participator. So we are going to be here until February 19th, hoping that you guys get to come on down and see us and become a part of our big family. Thank you, guys, so much for having us this morning and honoring us.
And I would just add, I haven't seen it recently, but the first time that I went to Universal Circus, it brought back every fond memory that I ever had of a circus. And so I would encourage you, there at Liberty Park until the 19th, but I would encourage you, young and old, young at heart, to see this presentation. It is magnificent, and I don't think you would be disappointed. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
That item was moved by Councilwoman Swerengen-Washington and seconded by Councilman Warren.
All in favor?
All in favor? All right, so that item has been approved by acclamation. Madam Comptroller, will you please call item number one?
Jenny, I have the big smile.
Item number one is presentation of the 2022 Memphis City Council Humanitarian Award.
Colleagues, we're gonna continue with the celebration and--
We gonna change it on the screen?
Okay, I was going to introduce them, but I'm gonna ask the, all Young and family to come down, Young family come down. Today, we're here to present the 2022 Humanitarian Award. Everybody come on up, come on, Mama Young and everyone. And we're so, I am so thrilled to be here and honored to do, to present this award to this awesome, awesome recipient. The, and I'm just going to read the resolution. Whereas the Memphis City Council Humanitarian Award commemorates the legacy of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. by recognizing individuals dedicated to the betterment of others and the promotion of racial harmony among all. And whereas a highly revered community servant, United States Army and Vietnam War veteran, faith leader, and counselor Bishop William M. Young served as the bishop and senior pastor of the Healing Center Full Gospel Church and CEO of the Healing Word Counseling Center. In addition to these roles, Bishop Young was a licensed professional counselor, marriage and family therapist, and clinical pastoral therapist in the state of Tennessee, with over 46 years in ministry and over 40 years in counseling. And whereas Bishop Young graduated from La Mooin Owen College, earned his Master's of Divinity degree in pastoral care and counseling from Memphis Theological Seminary, did doctoral work on his Doctorate of Ministry degree at Louisville Presbyterian Seminary, and completed his Doctorate of Ministry degree at Carolina Theological Seminary. Bishop Young was also a member of CALFA, CALFA Alpha Phi fraternity incorporated. Bishop Young was the author of the book The Morning After, an accumulation of his many years of and experience in the area of grief and loss. And whereas Bishop Young and his wife faithfully co-hosted the Christian talk show On the Road to Healing on Memphis WLOK 1340 a.m. on Sunday mornings, the Youngs also co-hosted Memphis on the Air Night Talk, a nightly public affairs call-in show. And Bishop Young was a weekly guest on Let's Talk About It, a talk show addressing emotional and spiritual issues. And whereas Bishop Young was a pioneer in many aspects of his life, having served as the first African-American staff chaplain at Methodist Health Systems in Memphis from June 1981 to July 1994. In 2003, he founded the National Suicide and the Black Church Conference, a conference hosted by Bishop Young and his wife Pastor Diane Young, which raises awareness of the increased number of African-Americans now making suicide an option. This conference has grown to an attendance of 450 participants over 20 states. And whereas Bishop Young transitioned from this life on October 10th, 2022, leaving to cherish his memory, his wife Pastor Diane Young, his children Paul, Dorcas, David, William Jr., and Maya, his grandchildren, the Healing Center family, extended family, friends, colleagues, and community members, now therefore be it resolved that the Memphis City Council joins with family and friends and the entire community in honoring and celebrating the life of Bishop William M. Young and his impact on the city of Memphis, and thanks his family for accepting this award of recognition on his behalf. The 2022 Memphis City Council Humanitarian Award for his amazing contribution in community service, faith, leadership, counseling, and beyond, adopted today February 7th, 2023. And I so move. Amen. And we're just so honored, and thank you so much for your contributions over the years. And Dr. Bishop, you all have been amazing in this community, and your awareness, bringing forth awareness on mental health and faith-based, and bringing those two together is such, is needed in our community even now. He was ahead of his time, and I'm grateful for the opportunity to have known you all and that you all are a precious jewel in the city of Memphis.
We are overwhelmed with joy receiving this honor that acknowledges the work my husband, a man of purpose, promoted love, care, and human welfare. His mission in life was simply to convince us that it's okay not to be okay, and if you're not okay, get some help. It is, if it's possible, I'm sure my husband assembled everybody in heaven that ever lived in Memphis and that ever knew us to watch today and cheer us on. I would be remiss if I didn't take this privilege to mention the fact that as we stand in the shadows of January 7th, one month later, our hearts remain pricked by the death of Tyree Nichols and the pain felt by his parents, his family, and this community. I'd like to salute those who continue the fight that we began in the 60s for social justice. My husband at TSU, me right here in Memphis, attending the meetings of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. If there was anything that could honor my husband, nothing would honor his memory more than for us to change the narrative that a change is gonna come to a change has come. Thank you, everybody. Thank you.
Mrs. Young, that award is just as much yours because you all were such a partnership. Now, I grew up in that, I guess I'd already left to go to college by the time you all were in that Old Caving area, but that was, those were my stomping grounds, and I know that the impact that you've made in that city as well as, well, in that part of town as well as this entire city, but no, that award is just as much yours because of the partnership that you and the bishop had, so thank you as well.
I can hear you in some.
Yes. That item was moved by Councilwoman, oh, Councilwoman Logan, and seconded by Washington. Okay, and so, Madam Comptroller, will you please show that that item has been approved by acclamation? Madam Comptroller, will you please call item number five?
Item number five is a resolution pursuant to Chapter 9.6 of the Memphis and Shelby County Unified Development Code approving a planned development at the subject property located at 5505 Malone Road. This resolution is sponsored by the Division of Planning and Development. The case number is PD 22-22.
Good afternoon, welcome. If you could state your name and affiliation for the record, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Brenda Salamito-Bazir, Salamito Land Planning, 1779 Kirby Park, Memphis.
Thank you. Councilwoman Johnson.
That item was discussed in the Planning and Zoning Committee and received a favorable motion, and I so move.
Okay. That item has been moved electronically by Councilwoman Johnson. Councilwoman Johnson, will you move it electronically?
I did.
Oh, okay, it's not showing up here. Seconded by Councilman Warren. Seeing no members in the queue to speak on this item, Madam Comptroller, will you please prepare the screens for the vote?
Carlisle, yes. Collette, yes. Easter Thomas, yes. Ford, yes. Johnson, yes. Logan, yes. Morgan, yes. Swerengen-Washington, yes. Warren, yes. Chairman Jones, yes.
That item passes.
Thank you.
Madam Comptroller, will you please call our fiscal consent agenda?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. That would take us to item number 11, a resolution to accept grant funds in the amount of $35,000 from the Tennessee Highway Safety Office through the Tennessee Department of Safety and Homeland Security. All council districts, this resolution is sponsored by police services. There is a request for same night minutes. Item number 12 is a resolution to accept appropriate an allocation of grant funds in the amount of $100,000 from living cities for the establishment of Contractor's University. All council districts, this resolution is sponsored by the Finance Division. There is a request for same night minutes. On our add-ons, we have item number 21, resolution to amend the FY 23 grant allocations of the Memphis City Council. All council districts, this resolution is sponsored by council members Robinson, Johnson, and Warren. Item number, there is a request for same night minutes. Item number 22 is a resolution to amend the council FY 23 grant allocations. All council districts, this resolution is sponsored by Councilwoman Robinson. There is a request for same night minutes. Item number 23 is a resolution to amend the council FY 23 grant allocations. All council districts, this resolution is sponsored by Councilman Carlisle. There is a request for same night minutes. Mr. Chairman, that concludes our fiscal consent agenda items.
Okay, thank you, Madam Comptroller. The fiscal consent agenda has been moved by Councilman Carlisle, seconded by Councilwoman Swerengen-Washington, seeing no members in the queue to speak on this item. Madam Comptroller, will you please prepare the screens for the vote?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, it's ready. Canali, yes. Carlisle, yes. Collette, yes. Easter Thomas, yes. Johnson, yes. Ford, yes. Morgan, yes. Vice Chairman Smiley, yes. Councilwoman Logan, yes. Swerengen-Washington, yes. Warren, yes. And Chairman Jones, yes.
Okay, that item passes. Madam Comptroller, will you please call MLGNW fiscal consent agenda?
That would take us to item number 13, a resolution approving change number one to contract number 12341, overhead storage tank painting for Arlington LNG and G and L Tank Sand Blasting and Coatings LLC, to change the scope of the work in the not-to-exceed amount of $100,000. Item number 14 is a resolution approving change number one to contract number 12240, overhead water storage tank painting inspections with Mid-South Tank Consultants to expand the scope and increase the current contract value in the funded amount not to exceed Item number 15 is a resolution approving change number 19 to contract number 9955, partial funding of pollution control program, water quality control program, with Memphis and Shelby County Health Department-- control program with Memphis and Shelby County Health Department to authorize the annual fee payment in the funded amount of $141,512.25. And item number 16 is a resolution approving change number 20 to contract number 11292, cashiering system replacement with system innovators to renew the current contract in the funded amount of $49,471.24. Mr. Chairman, that concludes our MLGW fiscal consent items.
Okay. Madam, uh, this item, well, Councilwoman Robinson isn't here. Vice Chair Morgan?
Thank you, Madam.
Okay. Thank you. That item has been moved by Councilman Morgan, seconded by Vice Chair Smiley. Seeing no members in the queue to speak on this item, Madam Comptroller, will you please prepare the screens for the vote?
Canali, yes. Carlisle, yes. Collette, yes. Easter Thomas, yes. Ford, yes. Johnson, yes. Logan, yes. Morgan, yes. Vice Chairman Smiley, yes. Swerengen-Washington, yes. Warren, yes. Chairman Jones, yes.
Thank you. That item passes. Madam Comptroller, will you please call item 18?
Item number 18 is a resolution to reallocate and appropriate $2 million to The Works, Inc. to assist in the completion of the Peachtree Senior Development, District 7, Super District 8. This resolution is sponsored by Canali, Carlisle, Easter Thomas, Ford, Johnson, Jones, Logan, Smiley, Swerengen-Washington, and Warren.
Thank you. Councilman Ford.
He met, recommends approval, and I so move.
Okay. Has been moved by Councilman Ford, seconded by, I see him hitting the screen, so seconded by Councilman Vice Chair Smi-, well, actually Logan there. Seeing no members in the queue, Madam Comptroller, will you please prepare the item for the vote?
Canali, yes. Carlisle, yes. Collette, yes. Easter Thomas, yes. Ford, yes. Johnson, yes. Logan, yes. Morgan, yes. Vice Chairman Smiley, yes. Swerengen-Washington, yes. Warren, yes. Chairman Jones, yes.
That item passes. Madam Comptroller, will you please call item 19?
Item number 19 is a resolution to transfer funds in the amount of $451,027.45 from the Affordable Housing Contribution from unassigned fund balance into the Memphis Housing Trust Fund in support of the continuous of affordable housing activity in the city of Memphis. All council districts, this resolution is sponsored by Housing and Community Development. This was held from January 24th.
Thank you. Councilman Covet.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Means approval, not so move.
That item has been moved by Councilman Covet, seconded by Councilwoman Easter Thomas. Seeing no council members in the queue to speak on this item, Madam Comptroller, will you please prepare the item for the vote?
Canali, yes. Carlisle, yes. Collette, yes. Easter Thomas, yes. Johnson, yes. Logan, yes. Morgan, yes. Vice Chairman Smiley, yes. Swerengen-Washington, yes. Warren, yes. Chairman Jones, yes.
That item passes. Madam Comptroller, will you please call item 24?
Item number 24 on our add-ons is a resolution appropriating funds in the amount of $300,000 in GO bonds to address major maintenance issues at Oberton Park Shell, project number PK 07110, District 5, Super District 9. This resolution is sponsored by Memphis Parks. There is a request for same night minutes.
Okay. Councilman Warren.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Approval, and I would like to move, but I can't. It's been moved by Swerengen-Washington.
Okay. That item has been moved by Councilwoman Swerengen-Washington, seconded by Councilman Morgan. Seeing no members in the queue to speak on this item, Madam Comptroller, will you please prepare the screens for the vote?
Canali, yes. Carlisle, yes. Collette, yes. Easter Thomas, yes. Ford, yes. Johnson, yes. Logan, yes. Morgan, yes. Vice Chairman Smiley, yes. Swerengen-Washington, yes. Warren, yes. Chairman Jones, yes.
That item passes. Madam Comptroller, will you please call item 20?
Item number 20 is a resolution establishing a Parks Restoration Fund and reallocating and reappropriating $500,000 from FY 23 CIP budget, District 6, Super District 8. This resolution is sponsored by council members Jones and Carlisle.
Okay. Councilman Carlisle.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
In light of, in light of ongoing negotiations between the two 501(c)(3)'s and the city of Memphis as mediator slash handholder, we may have to amend this agreement based on the end result of those negotiations. So, I'm going to move that we hold this item until a time that they have reached agreement, and then we'll amend that based on, on what they come to an agreement.
Okay. That item has been held, but we do have one card, and that card is for, yes, sorry.
They have something to say, too.
Well, I have one card, colleagues, to speak on item number 20. Mr. Kent?
Joe Kent, 5111 Flamingo. With this item 20, we need complete and monthly progress reports from the Riverfront Steering Committee on all things riverfront to include Tom Lee Park, Mud Island, Cobblestones, Conset, Brooks, and the Boat Dock. There's a $100 million public spend going on. No development is going to occur here in the punk bully town on Jack Salmon's Avenue. It's not gonna happen until Memphis changes its ways. Secondly, Chief Davis has questions to answer about the Scorpion Unit, but I support her based on her expeditious actions following the Tyree Nichols tragedy. As far as culture questions, that precedes Davis, who has been here for only 18 months. When it comes to culture, that points to this body in the Memphis Tomorrow Crime Commission. You all never have questions for Memphis Tomorrow and the Crime Commission, like as in, who were the members of the Sexual Assault Kit Task Force from 2015 to present and what happened to $10 million in federal rape kit money? That is a current cover-up that predates Davis with links to the Franklin and Fletcher case. And sadly, with all the strong woman moxie, this body's response has been weak, docile, and submissive to aggressive questioning regarding Sexual Assault Kit Task Force and $10 million in federal spend since 2015. That goes to the deficient culture of this body and the Memphis Tomorrow Crime Commission. Memphis Crime Commission wasn't on the agenda today, guys. Wasn't on there. Without a complete audit of MBD is needed, as well as a complete audit on all city of Memphis public safety-related contracts and external MPD contracts. Thank you.
That item has been held. Is there, do we need to the next meter?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, that's fine.
So, item number 20 has been held.
Madam Comptroller, um, let's see. Let's go back to our-
I want to go back to our consent agenda, and I want to divide the question. I want to divide, colleagues, I want to divide the question on the consent agenda because we've added on some items that were in committee today to our consent agenda. And normally, we do not have an opportunity for members to speak on an item, but some of these are the public safety issues that were brought about today. So, what I want to do, I want to separate the question for the consent agenda and only vote on right now, looks like item number six, seven-
Eight, nine, and ten, I think, Genzie.
Six, seven, eight, nine, ten. Six, seven, eight, nine, ten. So, if there's no objection, we're going to divide the question of the consent agenda, and we'll vote on six, seven, eight, nine, ten, and then we'll look at the rest of the consent agenda and deliberate, discuss that, have opportunity for public input on those items.
Without objection, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. There's no objection to that. So, Madam Comptroller, will you please prepare the screen to vote on the consent agenda, which will include items six through 10?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For the record, our consent agenda is item number six. It's up for second reading. This is ordinance number 5845. It's sponsored by Chairman Jones, Ford, Johnson, Logan, Swerengen, Washington, and Warren. Item number seven is also up for second reading. Ordinance number 5846 is sponsored by the Memphis City Council. Item number eight is up for first reading, and ordinance amending ordinance number five through six, seven, uh, the code ordinances, city of Memphis, Tennessee, adopted on August 10th, 2010, as amended, known as the Memphis and Shelby County Unified Development Code to authorize a zoning use district reclassification for land located at 4225 Getwell Road by taking the land out of the residential single-family use district and including it in the employment use district. Up for first reading, this ordinance is sponsored by the Division of Planning and Development. The case number is ZTA 22-12. The ordinance number is 5847. Item number nine is also up for second reading. Uh, it's an ordinance sponsored by the Division of Planning and Development. The case number is ZTA 2201CC. That ordinance number is 5844. This ordinance was held from January 24th. In our engineering, we have item number 10. It's a resolution accepting public improvements for Morning Woods Plan Development, Phase Two, Parcel One, PD 99-330, contract number 5312. The release of the bond is authorized. There's a request for same night minutes. The contract number again is 5312. Mr. Chairman, that concludes our consent agenda items.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Chairman. Seeing no member, uh, so, can I get a motion on the consent agenda? Has been moved by Councilman Warren, seconded by Councilwoman Swerengen-Washington. Seeing no members in the queue to speak on items six through 10, Madam Comptroller, will you please prepare the screens for the vote?
Canali, yes. Carlisle, yes. Collette, yes. Easter Thomas, yes. Ford, yes. Johnson, yes. Logan, yes. Morgan, yes. Vice Chairman Smiley, yes. Swerengen-Washington, yes. Warren, yes. Chairman Jones, yes.
That item passes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
That moves us to what would be our, well, Madam Comptroller, I want, before you call item number 25. So, colleagues and members of the public, in our committee meeting, in our public safety committee meeting today, we didn't have an opportunity to address a lot of those things, so we decided to bring them downstairs. Now, some of these are ordinances, some of these are resolutions. But this, what I want to make it, make a point of is that this is just the beginning of a discussion. This is just the beginning of the discussions that we're going to have on this particular item. So, as it relates to ordinances, there are three readings for that. And we, as a council, we want to be as transparent as we possibly can, you know, as I mentioned in some of the committee meetings. This is, unfortunately, there is no separating the administration from the council in you all's eyes. However, this is the public's forum and opportunity to address us. So, what I want you to do, I want you to be mindful of, the council controls the purse strings, but all of the division directors report to the mayor, which is a different body of government than us. But we want to hear you out. We want to address the concerns that the public has because we are here to serve you. Now, we're gonna, the first one, item number 25, I'm going, and I have numerous cards on those items. I have, colleagues, I have, and normally what would be- Our practice for agenda items is when it comes up for first reading, there typically is no public input on that. But based upon the gravity of the discussions that we're having, we're gonna abandon what those normal practices are to hear from you and to address your concerns. But now, what I want to do, make clear though, that this is a meeting in the public, not a meeting of the public, but we still want to be mindful and hear input because there's, there's no way for us to hash out and to hear everything in just a regular Memphis City Council meeting. I can envision, and part of us having the discussion today, is to have a coordinated effort because with 13 members up here, you could have very well had 13 different town hall meetings going on at the same time, and that's not going to get us anywhere. But in this forum, and I, and I want to mind, remind everybody, please be respectful, no profanity, and, and Mr. Young won't have any problem escorting anybody out of here. But I want to make this an open dialogue, open discussion to address the concerns of our community, folks, because we got to do all that we can to try to make sure that this does not happen again in our community. We have been, you know, and, and some of the public statements that I've made is that Chief Davis did a swift job in handling it. The district attorney did a swift job in handling it. But unfortunately, when it comes to the council and what we have to do, we can't do it instantly. So, I'm going to ask for your patience. I'm going to ask for some constraint and restraint as, as we deal with this. But the council wants to be as transparent because we are the most public-facing of the city of Memphis. We are the public face of the city of Memphis because, you know, to his credit or discredit, the mayor doesn't have twice-a-month meetings to hear what your concerns are. But, but we do. But we want to hear from those. But now, I have, one, two. Thirteen, I have 13 cards here. And if, what we're gonna have to, what I'm gonna ask is that, and now, and this is just on item number 25. And items that we have today, everybody, where we suspended the rules or we're dealing with the consent agenda, items, those are going to be items number 25, 26.
Is it considered?
Yes. Hit me up.
A lot.
Okay. Well, it, it's a lot. So, what I'm going to ask is, uh, is, uh, is that, Madam Comptroller, that you give us 15 minutes to hear from, from the members that are called. So, we're, we're going to ask you to be respectful of the person that's speaking behind you. But we want to hear, everybody, like I said, this is not the end. This is just the beginning. You know, this is really a listening session, but it's not, we've had, we have other business to conduct here. And I would imagine, I would hope that we have some follow-up meetings, you know, something that was discussed. It may be that we recess, instead of adjourning and waiting another two weeks, that we recess, meaning that we can call the meeting back up and hear additional concerns. But, you know, I, I can't emphasize enough, public, that we want to hear your concerns. We want to address your concerns. We want to listen to you. But we have to have some type of format in order- And, uh, I might have to cut you off in order to hear the next person that's slated to speak. So the first speaker is gonna be, and I'm just gonna take him, not gonna switch up the order, the, the order that Mr. Young presented him in, that's the order which we're gonna hear. Our first speaker is going to be Ms. Beth Hoffberg.
And please state your name and address for the record, please.
Hi, my name is Beth Hoffberg. I live at seven seventeen South Riverside and three eight one oh three. Thank you for hearing us. Um, I do wish they were given more time today. I'm going to take as little time as possible to give the rest of the people time to speak. Um, I appreciate that there's clearly some work being done to have some ordinances passed, but, um, I'm, I really want to make sure that ordinances passed are going to end the use of pretextual, uh, traffic stops and the use of unmarked cars and plainclothes officers, that we pass the data transparency ordinance. Um, I also want to have a commitment from the city council that there will be more of an investigation into how we can completely remove police from traffic enforcement altogether and completely reimagine how policing works in the city of Memphis. Um, there is a systemic problem. The entire reason that we have this problem with police is because the creation of police is based in systemic racism, and we do not need to have that continue in twenty twenty-three. Um, I am very glad that we can get justice for Tyree Nichols, but he is not the only person who was, uh, killed at the hands of police in the past couple of months even. We do not have the information on people who were killed by police even just in December. Um, I wanted to see the information released on those victims as well. Um, and we cannot just take the word of police that just because they say that someone was shooting at them, that they were shooting at them. Clearly, we saw from the video of Tyree Nichols that the word of police is not the truth. Um, I also want to see an ordinance, because I do not see this, to dissolve the OCU and the MGU. Dissolving Scorpion was a start, but that is not sufficient. Um, and also, we just saw that there are an additional, um, additional eight members of the police department that are going to be charged internally. I want those names released, and I want to see them, um, charged as well in other ways, and their files need to be released. Um, and I'm gonna stop so that someone else can talk. Thank you.
We have Seema.
Hey, Val, you're at thirteen fifty.
I was not.
And she stopped.
Okay. Uh, next we have, uh, Seema Rasool, and I apologize if I mispronounced her name.
My name is Seema Rasool, nineteen South Tucker, three eight one oh four. I just got back from the dentist, so excuse my face. I'm gonna try to keep this as short as possible, and I really shouldn't have to explain why these ordinances need to be passed. Simply, it'll save lives. And I'm looking mainly at all you black council members on here. Tyree was killed by his fellow black brothers. Do the right thing, and don't be the reason why another one of your black brothers and sisters gets killed this next month or next year. Now, moving forward, um, I know y'all are working on the MPD budget. I'm not sure if that's this month or next month. Either way, you guys are responsible for militarizing the police and how much money they have. Um, and we all know that there is no correlation between, uh, high crime rate and high numbers of cops, that they don't connect. More cops does not mean less crime. What does mean less crime is funding things like education, housing, transportation, which, by the way, I saw you guys passed off all your, y'all no longer fund education, you guys pass it off to the federal government? Good job, guys. No, you guys, you take responsibility for funding things like that, period. Um, and Chairman Jones, this is kind of a little side note. I heard you on CNN, national TV, say that, uh, Tyree's video wasn't as bad as Rodney King's video. With all due respect, sir, you need to get your eyes checked, because I've never in my life seen a video that horrific. Lastly, I don't see Chief Davis here. Does anyone see Chief Davis? I don't. Um, so y'all need to go ahead and tell her that we know she said she's disbanding the Scorpion unit, but the distrust in the community between us and the cops is large. We're not fools. We know all she's gonna do is move some people around, give it a different name, and say she disbanded Scorpion unit. So you guys let her know, we're fully aware, and we will be watching her and ensuring and making sure she holds what she said she's gonna do. Again, when you guys make that, uh, budget for MPD, remember, what you do is gonna be the reason why somebody lives or dies next month.
Hello. I'm Joy Stewart. Uh, thank you for allowing me to speak. I'm really gonna be short, because I know a lot of people have a lot of nineteen, Joy Stewart, nineteen fifty-nine, Embry Gate Lane. So I'm here in support of passing these ordinances to, um, change the way, um, policing is. We know that what we're doing is not working, and it is hurting people in our community, the people of color. And, uh, we know that policing, uh, is the problem. The system is the problem. They're making radical movements, so we have to do, have radical change in order to change the things that are going on. There's an external cul- culture of wanting violent control over black people. That culture created policing, and you cannot train it out. We clearly know that the police are trained to deescalate because we see them do it, depending on who the citizen is, they are able. So it's not about training, it's not about more police. We have too many police and not enough justice. So we are calling on you to make the radical changes that need to be made. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker, I can't read the last name, I think it may be Luca is the first name? Uh, some thirty-one sixty Spotswood? Okay. Lucia? I, I'm sorry, I can't read the handwriting.
My name is Lucci.
Lucci, okay.
Charm, thirty-one sixty Spotswood Avenue. Chairman, you said that this is the beginning of the conversation, but we've been trying to have this conversation with y'all for years. We've told y'all many times that we want an end to these specialized units, and you have failed to act. You have failed the citizens of Memphis over and over and over again. I'll be brief, but we hold no space for your tears.
Next, we have Reverend Gordon Myers. Uh, next card is Ms. LJ Abraham.
Hello, LJ Abraham, one hundred and nine South Lane. Um, this is my second time being in this building today. The first time I watched y'all listen to what, uh, CJ Davis had to say, which she couldn't address anything specifically or directly. She had no clear answers to any of the questions that y'all asked, yet I hear people praise her for doing this, uh, quick response to this action. It was not quick, and we still don't have clarity. We still don't know who the other eight officers were. She stood up here today and said that there were the ten, there were a total of ten people. JB Smiley asked her how many people, ten, twelve, ten, twelve. An attorney guy appeared today and said, no, there's eight additional. That's thirteen people. We've only seen five officers, all of whom were black. Be charged and fired. We have eight more people to go. Police are a problem. MGU is a problem. Scorpion unit is a problem. Scorpion unit was dismantled, but she said they, they've been moved to other units. She said that out of her own mouth today. They've been moved to other units, which means whatever behavior that they had prior to and while they were in Scorpion unit is the same behavior that they're going to exhibit when they get these other units. Nothing about it is going to change. So while we're praising CJ Davis, we also need to be thinking about dismantling those units and defunding that program, because that's not benefiting anybody in the city of Memphis right now. As we saw, he got beat to death. I can't even watch the video. They beat him to death. That behavior is not new. That behavior was caught on camera this time. And I'm leaving it up to all of y'all to make the decision, to make a change today, starting today with these ordinances that we're asking you to pass. Please pass them, because we're serious, and we're not stopping. We're gonna fight every day. It ain't going away. We're not going away. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Abraham. Ms. Pearl Walker.
Pearl.
Pearl Walker, five three seven eight Lock, Lomond Road, Memphis, three eight one one six. Greetings from the beautiful Hamlet of Whitehaven. There's been a lot of talk about police, police reform, and what happened to Tyree Nichols. I want to speak to the minds, the hearts, and the souls of Memphians. Memphis is a city that has been disproportionately affected by trauma, all ages and all demographics. And the latest is Tyree Nichols, whether you have seen the video or not. Just hearing about it is trauma. I'm sure you're familiar with Commissioner Caswell and ACES. Well, I'm part of an organization called Inward Journey, who works with individuals to help them to address their trauma as well. Last week, uh, last year, all of you received an invitation to view a documentary called The Work. It's about the work that we do. I'm gonna send you another invitation, and hopefully at least one of you can come and see it. We've had, um, Representative Hardaway, Sheriff Bonner, um, both Sugarmans and Clerk Ha- Clerk, Clerk Herbert as well. And so most recently, we had a workshop, after the election, we had a three-day workshop with, um, DA Mulroy, Sheriff Bonner, and Judge Sugarman, and it went very well. Our organization has worked with people from all over the planet for the past thirty years. We have members all over the United States, and this organization was founded right here in Memphis, Tennessee. And so my ask today is, I don't know what committee this would fall under, I don't know what budget this would fall under, but Memphis, we need something where about all of us can access something to help us mitigate all this trauma that plagues us. We have partnered with Inside Circle out of California to deploy their transformational process to incarcerated adults and individuals. We have worked with street gangs, police departments, corporate groups, nonprofits, and school systems to help them address
Ms. Walker. Ms. Walker.
Their organizations.
Ms. Walker. Ms. Walker, I'm gonna have to conclude your comments because we need to speak from other people, but this is item number twenty-five, and when you come up to speak, I need you to speak on what's gonna be this item. If it's gonna be general comments.
Sure, but I got called.
But because you were presented, you Okay, I'm sorry, because it wasn't a particular number, but normally, you've been down here enough. Normally, general comments are towards the end. This, the comments now should be addressing item number twenty, item number twenty-five.
Okay, so in conclusion.
Ms. Walker.
We would like to
Ms. Walker.
Meet with you all. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Uh-huh.
Uh, Ms. Latonya Blankenship, I have your card here, but it doesn't have a number. Are you gonna speak about item number twenty-five? Okay. Okay. Uh, Mr. Michael Patterson, uh, is yours gonna be addressing number twenty-five as we're talking about?
The general comment.
Okay, well, it, we'll hold that to the end of the meeting. Uh, Richard Massey, is your, Mr. Massey, is yours gonna be addressing item number twenty-five? Uh, okay.
Good afternoon, counsel.
Good afternoon.
Um, my name is Richard Massey. My address is six fourteen Coastal Drive. First and foremost, I want to acknowledge the strides we've made in pursuit of justice for Tyree Nichols. We've effectively disbanded the same unit responsible for dispatching the officers involved in the murder of Mr. Nichols, as well as a litany of other incidents of inexcusable police misconduct. Vice Chairman Smiley and the council have also drafted an ordinance that we are here and observance of today, that, that would establish a police misconduct registry that documents all records of the use of deadly force. However, the deliverance of justice for Tyree Nichols looks like true fundamental police reform at every single level. What I'm referring to is, is developing a trust fund for the creation of a community oversight board charged with reporting the reputability and effectiveness of policing in our communities. A newly established training mandate that includes implicit bias training, cultural competency, disability competency, adolescent development and crisis intervention, the expansion of the accredited Memphis Crisis Intervention Team, the elimination of racially biased police tactics like broken windows policing that enable these officers to commit a heinous act to the extent in which they did, and an early intervention system built within the MPD to identify officers who are most at risk for adverse interactions with the public, and the ushering in of new certified community behavioral health clinics under the Federal Bipartisan Safer Communities Act to alleviate the burden on our police to deal with low-risk mental health crises. These structural reforms are integral to preserving our vibrant community police relationship that is critical to the safety of all Memphians, as well as ensuring another mom never has to listen to her son cry out in agony via, uh, police body cam footage. These are the changes our community is so desperately yearning for. This is what the deliverance of true justice looks like, and I hope that the council follows accordingly. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Massey. Chelsea Glass. Ms. Chelsea Glass.
record.
Your name and address for the record, please.
Chelsea Glass, thirteen fifty Concord Avenue, three eight one oh four. Um, so I have lots of thoughts and feelings and comments that I'm gonna keep to a minimum out of respect for my fellow folks that are out here tonight. Um, but body cameras are unfortunately not a solution. Now, while the body cameras were able to get on camera what happened to Tyree Nichols, and the Skycop camera was able to get on camera what happened to Tyree Nichols, even a broken clock is right twice a day. So what I'm saying is that these cameras and these investments are not life-saving measures. We cannot continue to make financial investments that are not going to save lives. We are beyond the pale on half-measures. We are beyond the pale on small reforms and small steps. The ordinances that Decarcerate Memphis has written and handed to y'all are going to save lives. Let me be clear, they are going to save lives. And they're gonna save financial hardships on people who are already living in poverty. It's going to reduce bias and traffic stops. There are so many things that are critically important about the ordinances that we passed to y'all and also could have kept Tyree here today when we came to you on December sixth of two thousand twenty-two, and only a few of you even bothered to show up for that meeting. And I just want to say for the record, I am disgusted that Patrice Robinson is not here tonight when this happened in her district. But I'll be back.
Thank you, Ms. Glass. Uh, Ms. Theron Bond.
Theron C. Bond, fifty-seven North Somerville, Memphis, Tennessee, three eight one zero four. Um, while this is a great start, this resolution lacks teeth. Barring an officer from promotion for two years is nothing compared to a civilian who's lost their entire lifetime due to police interaction or a community that will live in a pool of drama every time they see blue lights. I'm still not clear on why an officer misusing their body-worn camera or having marks of officer-involved incidents in their jacket would ever be considered for a promotion, which we know is a reward. How many examples do we need of civilians that never get to have their day in court for alleged infractions and never get home to see their family again before we stop awarding or making exceptions for individuals who take an oath to protect and serve, but only serve their agendas to protect themselves? This resolution does not go far enough. It expresses the need for an officer to abide by all MPD policies and procedures, but considering we don't currently have a national registry for officer offenses, how do we know that the past of an officer with roots from a law enforcement agency elsewhere won't rear its ugly head in Memphis? If we want this resolution to have thick, strong, progressive teeth, a turnaround to a turnaround time of no more than seventy-two hours should be instituted for a civilian complaint to be received and placed publicly on the ISB dashboard via the City of Memphis website. In the spirit of transparency, the officer supervisor and precinct should also be made available to the public. To go further, if we are truly serious about reform and serving the people, then any officer who has had any instance of body cam misuse or excessive force would never be eligible for a promotion. We should not and cannot continue to be brilliant at the basics by rewarding mediocrity and being charged for it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bond. So that is, colleagues, those are the last of the comment cards that we have. So although I called item number, I guess I didn't officially call item twenty-five. We've had the discussion on item number twenty-five. So Madam Comptroller, will you please call item twenty-five?
Item number twenty-five is a resolution to establish misuse of body-worn cameras and excessive force complaints as disqualifying factors in the Memphis Police Department promotional process for a period of two calendar years. All council districts, this resolution is sponsored by Councilwoman Smiley, and there's a request for same-night minutes.
Vice Chair Smiley?
Thank you, Chairman Jones, and also thank you, thank, um... I am indeed grateful and encouraged that each and every one of you are here today. I often tell people, I think what makes our body do our job as relates to creating change in our community is when each and every one of you show up. So to Decarcerate Memphis, I think we all owe you a standing ovation. You've done phenomenal work, so take a moment and give a hand clap to Decarcerate Memphis. But, but the work doesn't stop with Decarcerate Memphis. It, it, it takes each and every person actively engaged in this process. If you look at the add-on agenda, you see items number twenty-five to thirty-two. Those are, I think, about eight items targeting reform. A lot of those items, Decarcerate Memphis had a part in, our council staff, and each member of this body. Councilman Jones read a lot of the cards from the public that talked about reforms required going forward. But I also received ten letters from the Collegiate School of Memphis. And I'm going to read one with, one before you today before we start talking about any proposed measures. It is from a sixth grader named Jocelyn at the Collegiate School of Memphis. Dear Memphis City Council members, my name is Jocelyn. I'm a sixth-grade student at the Collegiate School of Memphis. I'm writing to request a change in our city and to aim towards building a safer community. In reference to the case of Tyree Nichols, I ask you to discontinue pretextual traffic stops because just like Mr. Nichols, someone could turn out seriously injured just because the officer thinks they committed a crime or because they look suspicious. I also think that police shouldn't be quick to jump to conclusions or just arrest someone because of how they look. I ask that you work towards passing the traffic safety ordinance. In addition, I ask that you tell your officers to have transparency when it comes to pulling someone over, something your officers didn't have when pulling over Mr. Nichols. I also ask that you treat everyone equally. And if a cop has done something bad, don't just move them around to another position thinking they'll do better. To conclude this letter, I hope that you consider these ideas and do some good with them. Sincerely, Jocelyn. The reason that I read that letter, because I think our job as elected officials is truly to represent everyone, every man, woman, and child, from the homeless to the homeowner. And I believe it's important to give a voice, a platform, to young people who are actively engaged in the process. So kudos to you, Joc, and kudos to the Collegiate School of Memphis, having their young people engaged in this. There, there are several items talking about reform. And I think, I don't want you to look at each item as an individual piece of legislation. I want you to look at it as a holistic act, so to speak, talking about how do we create reform in the City of Memphis. I think we all want more transparency. I think we all want our police department to truly be accountable for the bad decisions that they've made. And I think we also want our communities to be safe. I'm going to do what I'm supposed to be doing now for Councilman Jones, having to stop talk. Particularly as it relates to Resolution number twenty, Resolution, item number twenty-five, I think we have to understand there are certain limits to what this council can do. We can speak legislatively in terms of creating ordinances, but sometimes when it comes to the internal police procedure, there's certain limitations that this body has. I'm going to read part of the resolution, and then I will move this item. I might read it all, actually. Whereas the Memphis Police Department has a promotional process for officers seeking promotions in the ranks within the department. Whereas it is imperative that officers undergoing consideration for promotions abide by all MPD policies and procedures and do not have a record substantiated violations of these policies as police officers are charged to protect and serve the citizens of Memphis. And whereas MPD Policy Procedures Section rules, DR three oh one, excessive force and unnecessary force states, excessive force unnecessary is defined as the amount of force which is beyond the need and the circumstance of the particular event, or which is not justified in light of all circumstances, as is the case of deadly force to protect property constrained with protecting life. And whereas, per the MPD Policy Procedures Manual, section in car video slash body worn cameras, and section B, use of BWC during the shift, the policy states in part, an officer shall at all times during his or her shift have BWC equipment ready to record police interactions with those they may encounter. This state of readiness, including having the BWC on and in standby mode, officers shall attempt to maintain a clear, level, unobstructed, four-facing view. Officers shall attempt to keep the microphone portion of the device unobstructed in order, in order to accurately record audio. In addition to policy states in bold lettering, officers shall activate their BWC when responding to all calls for service prior to making the scene of a dispatch call. That did not happen in Mr. Nichols' case. Whereas MPD Policy DR one oh one, Compliance for Regulation states that disciplinary action may be taken for, but not limited to violations of stated policy, rules, regulations, orders, or directives of the department. However, depending on the severity of the action or incident, disciplinary action may not always be rendered or may only be an oral reprimand. And whereas substantiated reports of excessive force and unnecessary use of force and misuse of body-worn cameras where formal, verifiable, disciplinary action is not taken contributes to the possibility for an officer to demonstrate a continued disregard for policy and contribute to an officer's incalculated sense of impunity and must not be rewarded with the opportunity for promotion. Now therefore be resolved that the Memphis City Council does hereby wish to establish substantiated reports of misuse of body-worn cameras, BWC, and a use of excessive unnecessary force as disqualifying factors for participation in promotional process with the Memphis Police Department for a period of two years, two calendar years, or two promotional periods, whichever is longer. Be it further resolved that the information regarded substantial, substantiated reports of misuse of body-worn cameras, excessive and unnecessary use of force shall be made public via the ISB dashboard on the City of Memphis website. Each report incident shall include the name of the officer, the date and time of the incident, type of substantiated claim, misuse of body-worn camera, excessive unnecessary force, et cetera, location of the incident, and a disciplinary action taken by the MPD. And I so move.
Okay. That item has been moved by Vice Chair Smiley, seconded by Councilwoman Eza Thomas. I have Morgan and Johnson in the queue. Councilman Morgan?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I know we've got a lot to go over, so I'm going to try to be brief. You know, this is a resolution that deals with policy procedures, promotional periods, disciplinary action, and reporting. And to the last point of reporting, you know, terrific. I'm all on board. And speaking with Reverend Kirkwood earlier when we were going over CLRB this morning, and then talking to him afterwards for an additional, I don't know, thirty to forty-five minutes. In the request that they were making, obviously, there was, there was for the additional funding. There was for changes to the MOU. And I think some of that discussion on the MOU went unaddressed. And so I want to get into that because I believe this touches on the MOU as well. But he also talked about the audit and talked about reporting. And so something I would like to do under the audit committee, and I don't think it has to be anywhere of a process as formal as an audit, but I think we can request and get the information from the, the police administration in regards to the number of cases that their internal affairs has handled in excessive force in body camera information. And how were those cases handled? What was the punishment or the judgment of internal affairs and handed down? And go back multiple years over all the cases that they've handled, from things that were criminal to things that were simply a violation of policies and procedures. And when we get that information in front of us, I think we will have more data in order to evaluate whether we think the actions that our internal affairs department has taken, is it, is it too, too little? Is it fair? Is it too excessive? But we got to be able to look at that first. And that was something that CLRB is wanting and doesn't have. But I think we, we can just go ahead and, and work towards getting them that information. And it'll help inform our discussions. And I think it totally coincides with what is being requested here. And that can be something that goes forward on a, on a quarterly or biannual basis for the city council and for the public. Now, getting to the second point about the MOU, which I don't think we quite touched on in the CLRB discussion, and this gets into as well. Chief Sink or Mr. Wade, this is where we're going to have to rely on y'all. Where does the city council authority begin and end, and the mayor's authority begin and end when it comes to the issues of negotiating items that are in the MOU between the City of Memphis and the, the, the police organization? Policies and procedures, I believe that, correct me if I'm wrong, I believe that falls directly within the, the mayor's prerogative. But when we're talking about disciplinary action, the process for that, and promotional periods, is that a part of the MOU? And what authority do we have as a council to delegate that?
Yeah, those latter items are part of the MOU, which is not a contract per se, but a memorandum of understanding. Your role in it is to resolve any impasses that arise in, in reaching that MOU. You do not create it. You do not sign it. You are not a party to it.
Chief, Chief Sink, is that, is that a not-along or anything you'd like to add to that?
So the disciplinary process is guided by city policies and procedures as well as the MOU. And the MOU contains both economic and non-economic provisions. And under the current ordinance, the council doesn't have authority to make decisions regarding non-economic items. Those are negotiated between the administration and the association.
Okay, thank you very much. When is the current MOU up for renegotiation or set to expire?
If memory serves, I believe last year they negotiated a three-year agreement.
Okay, to my colleagues, I, I feel like this is, unless it is within the mayor's prerogative to renegotiate at will, which it may or may not be in terms of the language that's in there, or that they can come to some sort of mutual understanding to renegotiate the MOU, this may end up being an item that is left for the next council and the next mayor to decide when that next MOU is set to expire and be renegotiated. And to the public here, what that means is this is an issue for the election. And this is going to be a really important question to ask the eleven mayoral candidates. And if it is going to inform your vote on which way you want to decide for the next city council and for the next election, unless, again, outside of our authority, the mayor chooses to sit down and renegotiate, that I, I'm not sure this resolution is going to have the impact or the, make a difference versus what it's, you know, trying or stated to do. Thank you, Madam, or thank you, Mr. Chair.
Councilwoman Johnson, and then I'll allow, I'll ask for Vice Chairman Smiley to maybe address some of those concerns.
Thank you. I too think that additional information would help us. But the last, our request, and use of excessive and unnecessary force as a disqualifying factor for participation in a promotional process for two years. Basically, I'd like to amend it and take that out.
Is that a motion?
If they have excessive force, why would they even be considered in two years for a promotion? Okay. I would like to make a motion to amend the current rec, uh, resolution to strike that out and leave a strictly sustaining reports of misuse of body-worn cameras and omit that. I need a second. You second it?
There's friendly amendment.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Chair.
You, Councilwoman Johnson? Councilman Colbert?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would like to clarify. So what we're saying is the misuse of body-worn cameras precludes their promotion for two years or, or two promotional periods. Does the friendly amendment, because the use of unnecessary excessive force, I think should disqualify them from employment. Would, would the maker of the motion consider adding a sentence? Since you're the lawyer type, that the use of unnecessary force means they will never be promoted, preferably terminated? I mean, as you are the maker of the motion, sir, I, I, I put it to your good humor.
Friendly amendment accepted. Accepted.
If you would breathe the legal ease into it, that'd be great.
Okay, so I'm assuming it, it will sound something along the lines of, Alan, correct me if I'm wrong. Now therefore be it resolved that Memphis City Council does hereby wish to establish substantiated reports of misuse of body-worn cameras. It's disqualifying factors for participation in promotional process. In addition to those individuals who have substantiated complaints regarding excessive force and unnecessary force are effectively, should be considered for termination?
Should be considered for termination and certainly not for promotion.
Yep, should be considered for termination and certainly not promotion, Alan. Join in.
I mean, I understand this is going to the next mayor, and we're getting to the MOUs, but we're passing a resolution.
You're also getting into civil service. Absolutely. So our, the purpose of resolutions, our body speaks two ways. Our body speaks through ordinance, and our body also reflects what the will of the council is through resolution. We don't have the direct authority to tell the city's administration how to conduct their day-to-day business. But what we can do is say, this is the will of the council. This is the will of the people. We want you to act accordingly. I mean, it's up to each and every one of you to decide if the next mayoral candidates do not or will not comply with the request of the council. You have a decision to make. You either vote for them or you vote them out of office, or you send them home. You have a choice to make. Alan?
Let me, let me point out one other thing. I think we're going to be talking about supporting the adoption of the Floyd bill and cameras. It does have a provision in it for misuse of body cameras. It does also have a provision for enforcement. And unlike the language that we just talked about, it basically says that if an officer, it's basically applicable to federal agents. And if it is adopted, it would apply to us as well if we receive police funding from the federal government. Otherwise, it would not apply. But if it did apply, the penalty is, it provides that any person that manipulates the video footage captured by a body camera during or after its operation, appropriate disciplinary action shall be taken against the individual. It doesn't specify what that is.
That story.
It just says appropriate disciplinary action shall be taken. And I don't believe, under our authority, we have the authority to prescribe what appropriate disciplinary action is.
Okay, so by, so, and just kind of help me kind of catch up here. So the George Floyd item on our agenda that we'll be voting on basically achieves what I'm trying to do so we could potentially pull this amendment that I've offered because we're going to cover it under the George Floyd?
It, well, first of all, that's a big statement because it's stuck in Congress. But, but, you know, we'll have some further conversations about whether we can elevate our standards, whether it's passed or not. There are whole lots of provisions in that bill that we may want to adopt individually. But at this point in time, I think this is a resolution.
This is a resolution, so let's leave our language agreed to about excessive and unnecessary force. Let's leave our... Let's leave my friendly amendment in there with Councilman Smiley, and we'll pitch it back to Chairman for approval. I guess it's, assume it's friendly.
And let me interrupt. I think the whole purpose of this, and the chairman allowing you to hear from the public, is for us to hear kind of what their objections are. I think we may be able to come back and address some of those with more specific and comprehensive legislation.
I very much look forward to working with you on that, Council. Mr. Chairman, back to you, sir.
Vice Chairman Smiley, then Councilman Warren.
So I think my chief objection to the current MPD policy regarding compliance with regulations, it says disciplinary action may be taken. I think if you violate certain policy, it shouldn't be may, it should be shall. Shall means necessary, shall means it has to be done. So I just generally object to the language of may. So this is one of the reasons I offered this resolution. I think the goal here is to express the will of the council, speak specifically to, speak specifically to Chief Davis, and get to be, to be very direct. We have eight measures talking about criminal justice reform. Hopefully, we get all eight passed today. I think that's what the people want us to do. I think we have an obligation. And there's been a lot of talk in the media about Memphis setting the standard. I don't think we have yet. I think we've done, I think we've done a decent job. But the truth of the matter is, now the ball is before this by. And if we don't pass comprehensive legislation today, we cannot say we set the standard. We have a responsibility to each and every person here to set the standard. So what I'm asking each and every one of you, when you get, when you see these pieces of legislation regarding criminal justice reform, regarding police reform, do what the people tell you to do. Vote for them. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair Smiley. Councilman Warren?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We're going to be hearing a number of ordinances and resolutions tonight that may sort of step on each other's toes or not be congruent. And what I'm hoping that we do is we pass all of these today, but we take the next four weeks. And with our attorney, we come up with the Tyree Nichols ordinance or act, to where we have all of these in one act that are, that do what we need them to do to protect our citizens, and in the end, protect our law enforcement and our police at the same time. Because we all know that, you know, we had, we're having 30 cars stolen a day. We've had one of our member's cousins have the back of his car shot out by kids trying to rob him. So we've got, we have, it's a complicated thing. So we have to make sure that we have good policing, and we don't have any more of this stuff going on where people are being shot indiscriminately and pulled out of cars. So thank you.
Members of the public, sir, I would not have these outbursts in here. I would ask for you to be removed if that continues. Like I said, this is a meeting in the public, not a meeting of the public, okay? So we ask you to be respectful of the dialogue that's taking place here. We've had the opportunity for public comment. If you want to make a comment, grab a card. Hear it at the end, but I'm not going to allow these outbursts in here. Are you done, Councilman Warren?
I'm not sure that people could hear what I was saying. Yeah, well, I think the issue that we have to think about as a community is that we want safe streets, we want safe policing, we want safe neighborhoods, we don't want our children shot, and we don't want them shooting each other. Excuse me, ma'am, it's my turn to talk. You can get a card, please. But we don't want our kids killing each other. Right now, we have our children killing each other and shooting each other. You know, we had 347 murders, you know, two years ago. That's way too many kids dying. So we have to be able to, please, ma'am, we have to be able to allow them to grow up. We don't want them to die young. So it's a complicated thing. We don't want bad policing, but we also don't want our kids to die. So as we move forward, I want to see us get legislation that protects our citizens from overpolicing, and also protects our citizens from being killed indiscriminately by violent crimes and by guns. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Mr. Wade, I have a question. When, I forgot whether it was between the conversations that, or the comments that Councilwoman Johnson and Colvert were making, you talked about, we talked about that, we're getting into the civil service aspect of it. Is not that civil service or the provisions of that dictated by ordinance?
Yes, and also by state law.
Okay. So from the, so the comment where you were going with that, if there are issues that we run, a foul of, that are not dictated by state law, that make it easier for them to stay on the job, because it's by ordinance though, the council should be able to act to change that if that's the case? Is that not the case?
Yeah, we can, we can change it. We can set standards. But those standards have to be applied and administered by the administration, and it would be adjudicated by courts in terms of whether they were applied reasonably. So that is not, that is cut and dried as you might think, that you can prescribe a course of action, and it won't be subject to judicial review.
Okay. But, but that's, that's more so still dictated by statute as opposed, but by ordinance though, right?
That's correct. And what I'm saying is that, for example, there may be a misuse of a body camera in an innocuous situation. I mean, it may be a more egregious situation. There may be different gradations of discipline that can occur in a civil, an administrative judge might say that we acted improvidently and then reinstate the person. And the state law requires that if you discipline someone or affect their job rights, then they have the ability to have a contested case hearing on the Uniform Administrative Procedures Act, which is a state law, and then appeal to Chancery Court, Court of Appeals, Supreme Court, and then those people tell us whether what we did was appropriate. So it's not as though we are the absolute dictators of the outcome. And that's why I think where we are, we have to evaluate this carefully.
Okay. I don't see any other council members in the queue to speak on this item. So Madam Comptroller, will you please call item number 25, or please prepare item 25 for the vote?
As amended.
As amended.
Carlisle, yes. Colvert, yes. Easter Thomas, yes. Ford, yes. Johnson, yes. Logan, yes. Smiley, Vice Chairman Smiley, yes. Swerengen, Washington, yes. Warren, yes. Chairman Jones, yes.
That item passes unanimously. Madam Comptroller, will you please call item 26?
Item number 26 is a resolution of the Memphis City Council in support of the George Floyd Justice in Policing Act. All council districts, this resolution is sponsored by council members Logan, Easter Thomas, Ford, Johnson, Jones, Robinson, Smiley, Swerengen, Washington, and Warren. There is a request for same night minutes.
Okay. Thank you. This item, may I have a motion on this item? Okay, has been moved by Warren, seconded by Easter Thomas. I see multiple sponsors on this. Councilwoman Logan, followed by Councilman Carlisle.
Thank you, Chair. I wanted to bring this resolution forward because many of us attended Mr. Nichols' funeral last weekend, have watched the Nichols and Wales family give press conferences in which they, the family, they stated local and national leaders, even our vice, our vice president asked for a call to action. And this resolution just joins their call, and is a demonstration of the city council's support for their call to action and shared desire to see national police reform. And we just want it on record that we, as a body, support this, even though it's not under our direct purview, there are local, state, and federal legislation. And though we can't mandate this, we can show support. And that's what this is for, to show support that we want police reform nationally. And with that, well, it's already been moved.
Thank you. Councilman Carlisle?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I've been on the record that I agree that Congress needs to revisit this. And the only reason I use the term revisit is I haven't read the 200-plus-page act. And I'm just not in the habit of passing or doing things that I don't know what's specifically in them. However, the high bullet points are things that I agree with. And I want to make sure that, you know, these resolutions, albeit non-binding, have the full support of the body. The only thing that I truly don't understand at a more academic level is qualified immunity. I understand the premise of it. I understand section 80, 1983. But Attorney Wade, could you, could you walk me through or walk us through briefly, because I know we've got a lot of stuff? But ultimately, how qualified immunity works with, from 1890, but really through the 1983 or 1987 section, and then what specifically the law of unintended consequences is going to be by that movement? Somebody mic them up?
Go ahead. So on now? Your question was really a non-secretary when you asked me to briefly explain qualified immunity. Essentially, what the bill is attempting to do is to remove a defense that law enforcement officers provide, saying that they believe they acted in good faith and reasonably without knowledge that their actions were illegal. And that has been a defense to a 1983 act, this action. These are federal statutes. We have no jurisdiction over that. And this act is attempting, is mostly directed at police officers. It's attempting to bring their egregious acts to justice more easily. So that's essentially what it's about. And the one provision you're talking about is linked to use of excessive force where people die or sustains serious injuries. There are another provision dealing with racial profiling, where they create now a cause of action for people to bring in action and to get attorney's fees, which is a boon for the legal industry. But those are the two main provisions that are directed at law enforcement. There is also a provision dealing with pattern and practice, which deals with police departments. But those actions have to be brought by the state attorney general and are not private actions. So those are the major court-related actions in the bill. So, I mean, there's a lot of disagreement among politicians about the inclusion of those in the bill. I think that's why it stalled in Congress, quite frankly. But there are other provisions in the bill that I think we do agree with, and that is addressing and prohibiting excessive and unlawful force, racial, preventing racial profiling. The bill, incidentally, does not deal with protectual stops. They link it all with racial profiling, where you use race as a pretext to stop people either on a pedestrian stop or vehicular stop or in any investigation. So there are multiple provisions that we already have in our policies and procedures that I think we like. But, you know, it's up to you, it's a political question, whether you want to support the other provisions.
Thank you. And, yeah, I mean, I hate that it's a federal thing, it comes down to political ideology. And for me, like I said, there are several, several things in here, but in an effort, and where I disagree, and you can boo me, it's okay. Because we have to be representative of everybody. And not everybody takes your position that police should not enforce traffic, or that police should be disbanded. The police should definitely be reimagined, and culture definitely has to be changed. So we have to be able to have, and we use those words like we use them on sports teams, but the only way that you can do that is carrot and stick. And so the only way you can have the stick is if you've got the appropriate enforcement and visibility and transparency into what's happening. And so I think that's a lot of what we're attempting to do, is create a lot of the mechanisms that allow the public to have transparency, allow the people's body to have transparency, and then the accountability of it. You know, I fully support good officers doing a good job. And I think the majority of people in this city do, too. So, but with that being said, since we're on this specific item, I'm going to vote to support this, and you can add me as a co-sponsor as well. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Councilwoman Johnson? Were you in the queue to speak on this item? Oh, okay. Mr. Wade, I have a question for you. If you can address, for the public though, talk about particularly the federal application of the George Floyd Act, and how there are some provisions that, even though, let's just say if it passed in Washington, if and when it passes, talk about some effects that basically say that that application is only at the federal level versus something at the local level.
Right. As I indicated, there are prohibitions against use of excessive force, for example, except in reasonable circumstances, except when all reasonable measures have been tried, where de-escalation has been tried, and where it's an absolute necessity. Those provisions apply only to federal law enforcement agencies. They do not apply to local law enforcement agencies. The way the bill is ultimately going to be applied to local enforcement agencies is if you seek and obtain federal law enforcement funding from the federal government. And it's a choice that a lot of jurisdictions may choose not to do so, because they don't want to be faced with these onerous provisions. So that's, that's an example. The anti-profiling is another one that applies to federal agents. The other one, misuse of body cameras, applies to federal agents. The provisions that require law enforcement officers to intervene and to report misconduct of others applies to federal agents. So absent, the way they hook local governments in is to hook you into the funding. If you ask for the money, then you control. And there may be a slight message there for us, that there may be some carrots that we have, because we control funding, but I won't get into that.
Okay. And I think that that's an important part of this dialogue, too, because the council could have very well windowed this whole thing and said, we support this, and then it would have been any application that we have to do. And we could have just supported this and not had any of the other ones that follow. And this one isn't worth the piece of paper that it's on. Particularly if, you know, this council, you know, Memphis, the way that I've seen it, we've received and we've requested and received and applied for federal funding and received it, so we would be subject to it. But you could have a council after I'm gone, that basically says we don't want to accept federal funding, and therefore, we would have approved this, and we wouldn't have been subject to this as well.
Let me, let me push it a little further. I believe all those funds go through Nashville. And Nashville has an anti-crown war chest of its own, and they may decide we don't want the money. If they decide they don't want the money, then we wouldn't be subject to the Floyd Act.
Okay. Councilman Colvert?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm with Councilman Carlisle on this one, in that not being an attorney, not having read the bill, I agree with all this. Prohibit racial, religious discriminatory profiling, distribute federal grants to establish commissions and task force to study police reforms. All this I agree with, but I guess not being a lawyer, not reading the bill, the, and the qualified immunity, and exactly what all broad definition are we talking about when you say misconduct? You know, are we saying a police officer can get sued for pulling you over or wrong? Or, you know, obviously, their misconduct will all agree. But there's, I guess, bottom line, being the bottom line, I will vote for this certainly, because I understand and agree with every piece of because I understand and agree with every piece of the, except the end, qualified immunity, and only because I'm not completely, or do I feel that I'm fully, fully read in on that. But suffice to say, everything else I agree with, so I'm going to vote in favor of this.
Thank you. You know, just in response to that, I think we've seen cases where officers have been absolved for acts that have been caught on, caught on camera, whatever the case may be. And, you know, I feel that, you know, you've had people's lives totally disrupted, lives taken. And I think that this qualified immunity, if I'm not mistaken, Mr. Wade, I'm relying on you for this, applies to civil liability. So they may have been absolved criminally, but I feel that until somebody who might be found not guilty criminally, until their families are affected, that's not going to change the behavior. So until they are subject, so they might be found not guilty, somebody may die. Like, I, I'll give you an example. The, the, um, the lady in Oklahoma with the guy who was shot, walking, had his hands up, walking back to his vehicle.
Okay.
I think she was found not guilty. So unless her family's affected and other officers see, "My family's livelihood may happen if I do that," it's not going to change the behavior. That's, that's, so that's my opinion on this. So that's where qualified immunity goes to basically say, "You might be found not guilty criminally, but your family's going to be just as affected as that breadwinner, that man who, or lady who was shot." That's, that's where, that's where the qualified immunity goes civilly, civilly, yes.
And, and I'm, I'm, I'm with you, and as I shared, Mr. Chairman.
Is, I think this is Shannon Morning? Sharon, Shannon, okay. Hello. Please, please state your name and home address for the record.
It's Sharon Morning, 10226 Sterling Ridge Drive.
Thank you, welcome.
Yes, and greetings to you all. I initially had filled out for the number 25, but we didn't have the revised form. But nonetheless, I just want to say that it's imperative that we go from the sergeants all the way up to internal affairs. Our subordinate officers, they are only as good as their leadership. So it's time that we start releasing from CJ all the way down to the officers, I mean, to the sergeants. That's important. The officers, they're taking instructions from them, the leadership. So until we get the leadership corrected, the officers are going to continue to be who they are. Those sergeants, the sergeants, they were just officers. They did what the officers did, so you can't expect them to correct them when they just did it. The sergeants go and get promoted to a lieutenant, and being a sergeant, they're still covering the officers. So when they move up to lieutenant, they still got the same dirt on their back. We need everybody in Memphis Police Department. We are the people, and we put our trust in y'all. And y'all are failing us, and it's a fact. And we are tired, and we are not going to end. Everything that they spoke earlier, oh, we're going to be about it, because it's time that y'all get about it. We come in here, we talk to y'all, we plead with y'all, we be nice to y'all, and y'all do us in. Well, all this corruption from y'all, all the way up, we want a federal investigation. We do not want it just on Tyree Nicholson. We want it on Memphis. It's time to end all of y'all's corruption. Stop playing with us. This is our money, and we need to know, if you got body cameras, if you got body cameras, who's?
Thank, thank you for, yeah, thank you for your comment. Ms. Suzanne Jackson? Suzanne Jackson? Mr. Montes, Casio Montes? Casio? Casio?
Like, I was in here this morning, and I clearly heard everybody speaking on CJ Davis. I'm gonna get to what this fire chief.
Name and address for the record, Mr. Montes.
Casio Montes, 503 North Fifth Street, 38105. As I was saying, everybody's speaking on CJ Davis, this fire chief. Clearly had no answers to nothing y'all said, clearly. I don't know about y'all, but I read people. She was nervous. She knew she was in the high seat. Y'all are held accountable for the citizens, from the citizen standpoint. Get after my officers, get in these, get in these communities. See what the, see what the citizens are saying. Because when we come down here, we barely, barely get heard. Y'all hear us, but y'all not listening. I don't know if y'all know my background ain't nice. Only reason I'm being peaceful, because Ms. Wells and Mr. Wells, and I stand on it. I'm kindly telling y'all the same thing every time I get in front of this mic. And this ain't my first merry-go-round. I'm willing to go to jail, I'm willing to go to hell about what I believe in, and that's for the righteous of a people. So at the end of the day, CJ Davis, they were lies. Everybody on this, this committee know those was lies. Hold her accountable. How did Strickland even get hurt there behind what she did in Atlanta? If we gonna talk about it, let's talk about it. If we gonna be about it, let's be about it. Like, come on, man. I stand on this for free. I don't get paid. I stand on what I stand on for free. That's why I take it to the heart. If I'm willing to stand beside people that I know we have differences, to get to the bottom of this, I'm gonna gladly do it. There's 200 people outside on my command right now. Only reason I ain't in here, because I know they ain't gonna behave. I come respectful, because Ms. Wells and Mr. Wells, don't make me kindly say this, man. I stand on being. Y'all have a good night.
Thank you, Mr. Montes. Our next card is from Pamela Moses. Ms., Ms. Moses? Pamela Moses? Pamela Moses? Yeah, I'm calling you.
Greetings, greetings.
Name and address for the record.
Chairman Jones, Ms. Johnson, Pamela Moses, Mr. Work Morgan, Black Lives Matter Memphis, 2383 Jackson Avenue, 38108. First of all, like, I'm gonna try to be respectful, but I'm not gonna promise. But as far as the George Floyd Act, HR 1280, 117th Congress, that started in 2021, and it got stalled in 2022. We in 2023 now. And what happened to Tyree Nichols didn't have to happen. I contacted you, and I'm gonna pause, Mr. Jones, because I want that video shown. If you don't want to do it today, I want it put on the agenda. So everybody can see that the problem is not just your officers, it's your lieutenants, your sergeants, your captains, but y'all got one good damn colonel, and I'll say that because the lieutenant tried to arrest, Ms. Burris, who just left, and it took Casio, a community member, to intervene, as they were breaking the law with 100 cameras on them. So this is not a camera problem, this is an integrity issue that needs to be addressed. If you want to have public safety, you got to have trustworthy people. And if the trustworthy people are all the way at the top, you got to find some people. Even if it means we have to get rid of Ms. Davis. She never wanted to speak to me when she got here. I had a complaint against that same precinct, and this could have all been prevented in October with the clerk. But the process is in place, but it's not working. So you gonna have to do something else. So you shouldn't be afraid to pass something that hadn't passed yet. Lead the, I mean, lead the way. I ain't want to cuss. I'm trying to respect you. Lead the way. Memphis is, everything is watching Memphis right now. So show them that they didn't kill the dream, but they created some new dreamers, and we gonna have a vision for the whole world to follow. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Moses. Our last speaker is Seema Rasool. Rasool, I'm sorry.
All right, Seema Rasool, 19 South Tucker. Clearly, y'all didn't hear me the first time I was up here, and again, I had a dentist appointment today, so excuse the face.
Name and address for the record, please, again.
I already did. Seema Rasool, 19 South Tucker, 38104. Again, clearly, y'all didn't hear me the first time I was up here, and I'm talking to you, Councilman Warren. You, you mentioned how we need safe communities, and apparently you think more cops means safe communities, but we spend 40% of our city's budget on militarizing the police in this city. How high is our crime rate? Clearly, there is no correlation between more cops and less crime. What we need to fund, again, is education, housing, transportation, healthcare, and closing the wealth gap. I don't know how many times I have to say this for you guys to hear this. I shouldn't even be here. We were here in 2015 when, when Connor Schilling killed Darius Stewart. Why are we here again? Why is he still a cop in DeSoto? And for you, Carlisle, who thinks that you can just, like, reform or reimagine policing, let me ask you, what do you do when you have a rotten apple? Do you just wash it and eat it? No, you throw it away. It doesn't work. You can't fix something that's not broken. This system is working exactly how it was intended to work, and it's not fixable. We've been doing this for how many years? And people are steadily dying every day, but you guys seem to think that we can fix it by a couple reforms here and there. That's all I have to say. Oh, one more thing, and, I think, one more thing. Again, with the Scorpion Unit and MGU Unit, we keep calling them units, let's, let's reward that and be, be, be correct. They're occupation forces, period. As a Palestinian American who's lived in the West Bank, I know what an occupation force looks like. And as a Palestinian American, I guarantee you, I promise you, what we have are not units, they're occupation forces in our communities.
Thank you. Councilman Warren.
Thank you, Councilman Jones. I just wanted to correct a statement that was made to us a little bit earlier today. In addition to the six police officers who received disciplinary action resulting in termination, there are seven, not eight additional officers who are under, under investigation and facing charges. So that eight number was incorrect, it's seven. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Saying no other members in the queue to speak on this item. Madam Comptroller, will you please prepare the screen for the vote?
It was moved by Logan. Canaly, yes. Carlisle, yes. Colbat, yes. Easter Thomas, yes. Johnson, yes. Logan, yes. Vice Chairman Smiley, yes. Swerengen, Washington, yes. Warren, yes. Chairman Jones, yes.
That item passes. Madam Comptroller, will you please call item 27?
Item number 27 is an ordinance to establish a procedure for the Memphis Police Department to conduct an annual independent review of the police training academy and all training techniques. Up for first reading, ordinance number 5848, is sponsored by council members Carlisle, Canaly, and Smiley.
Okay. Thank you. This item was moved by Councilman Carlisle, seconded by Councilwoman Swerengen, Washington. I have Councilwoman Easter Thomas in the queue.
Thank you, Chair. I can let the makers of the ordinance introduce it. I was gonna ask for a friendly amendment. It can wait.
Okay. They're, they're yielding to you?
Yielding to the Councilwoman from North Memphis.
Friendly amendment for, I do agree that definitely conducting an annual independent review will just help us stay abreast and the public also be transparent in knowing that we're doing our due diligence to help to make sure that training is effective and efficient. My friendly amendment, if it's within our wheelhouse, on the second page in section one, it says that the audit shall be conducted by an independent third party to be selected by the Chief of Police and the mayor. Any recommendations and reports prepared as a result of the audit shall be presented to the members of the Memphis City Council. I propose that this change to, because of the auditor, I think that the council should be able to approve the selection and the budgetary allocation for that, as well as not let the administration have sole discretion to choose who scrutinizes their training program. So however that wording needs to read, but I, I ask for that friendly amendment, is that the council should approve the selection and the budgetary allocation for their training independent review. And then also, on the first page, where it says conducting a regular audit, if we can define regular. So what is it? What do y'all want that to mean?
Yes.
Thank you. All right, I'm gonna take, you're gonna have to remind me of two in a second. I'll take one first. Yeah, we have to be able to fund these things because we're the funding body, so that, that is an increase in funding and scope of work and services. This is one kind of round because we've got, the mayor has the ability to hire, he's the contracting authority, he has the ability to hire professional services without the express approval of the council. So I guess we could ask them to bring the contract for this specifically for the council's approval. My question to you is, is in best practice, meaning, I, I understand what Councilwoman Easter Thomas is, where it is heading, and I don't have an opposition to it, but what I'm concerned about is a political battle about how maybe the two or three finalists or finalists was selected and, and basically not tainting the process of the firms that do this work. And I know that, are, we have contracting procedures to bid this business for other things, right? We have policy, yeah.
Okay, so technically, you're right, the mayor can contract, we do not. I think the, to address the concern, the pertinent phrase is independent, that has significance, that is not someone in-house or someone aligned with anybody. Obviously, we can ask, when we do an ordinance, and the mayor can veto, we can override and do whatever, but it's still gonna be subject to our ability to interfere with his administrative and contracting power. So he may be able to refuse to allow us to participate, but we can certainly put it in and pass it.
I'll accept that friendly amendment. Councilman Smiley, Canaly? Any objections? Colleagues?
Kudos.
All right, what was number two? I told you I was gonna.
Thank y'all for the makers of the ordinance. All right, so that's in there. Also, on the first, on the last word, as before section one, just defining regular. So does that mean annual?
Yes.
Does it mean bi-annual?
Let me, let me address that. I think in the tech, in the accounting industry and under auditing, there are a number of different audits. Regular audit means just a regular audit confirming receipts, dispersals, certain criteria. That's, that's distinguished from a forensic audit, which goes beyond that, that vernacular and looks at criminal activity or misconduct. I don't think that's what this is designed for. I think it's designed to, to understand what the training protocols are and for you to evaluate whether those are sufficient. This is not a forensic audit, it's a regular audit.
Lamest time. Lame in his terms.
So instead of going backwards and saying...
So is there no timeframe for it? It happens once, or does it happen regularly?
Yeah, well, we already have it. It's in the caption. So, yeah, so it's gonna happen. Yeah, yeah, sorry.
That's all I needed.
Got it. And then I guess I'll address the general, the general thought here, which is, for me and for my co-sponsors, anecdotally, one of the things that I have heard, right or wrong, is, and I mentioned this earlier, is what is being taught in the police academy? And then what is, what is being, what is in the manual? And then what is actually being taught? Right? And then it really goes on to field training officers, which is the next big piece of that, right? There's been a lot of discussion about top-down and culture. And so if you're trained, or you're improperly trained, or you're tainted as a rookie trainee, then everything you do going forward isn't gonna have the result that we want, which is officers that are actually out there trying to serve and protect communities in the right way, right? All the de-escalation techniques, duty to intervene. All of that really is put in place with field training officers. I will give you an example of where we had a bad training officer. You may remember the case of Detective or Officer Eric Kelly, who was ripping off drug dealers and who was, uh, utilizing city property to run across state lines with women. He was a field training officer. So it's like Dinsdell in Training Day, telling somebody, like, this is how we behave. You're never gonna get a good work product out of that. And so we've got to make sure that we're utilizing an independent source or an independent audit of somebody saying, you are actually implementing and teaching the things that you're supposed to be teaching, and there's not a other unwritten set of rules that we're training officers, in which I think that there might be an issue there. So that was our thought process, and I appreciate the friendly amendments, and I yield the four. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Carlisle. Seeing no other members in the queue, we have four comment cards. Uh, first comment card is from Reverend Andre Johnson. Good afternoon and welcome, sir.
Good afternoon. Good afternoon. Thank you for this time shared. My name is Andre Johnson, 3381 Rollin Middleton Road, 38128. This is it. This is it. This is it. I know sometimes we'd like to reflect and think back about how would we be if we were living back in the civil rights days, you know? What side we would have been on? We like to think that we would have been on the side of justice. We would like to think that. And I know, because this is it. This is our moment. I don't know if I'm the only one in here can feel it, but this is our moment. Counsel people, counsel women and men, this is our moment. And I know that sometimes we like to think that, you know, I would have done something different back then, or I would have been there. But now we have an opportunity to be on the right side of history. Now, I know where they gonna stand, because they gonna stand on the right side of court. We got history to demonstrate for us who stood on the right side of history. We know where they gonna stand. The question I have for this august council is, where are you gonna stand? How? What do we have to do to convince you? What do we have to do to say? What do we say? What kind of words or stories or narratives that we have to share with you to get you to stand with us and stand on the right side of history? History is watching in this city, the city where King died, in this city, the city of civil rights, in this city, the city with all, with all of the power that we have stood up to this city. We are asking today, what side would you stand on? Stand with the people. God bless you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is gonna be Ann Adams.
Good evening. My name is Ann Adams. This is my first time ever attending a city hall meeting. I'll soon be 52 years of age, and I have watched our city.
Name and address for the record, please.
Pardon me?
Address, please. Name and address for the record, please.
My name is Ann Adams, 172 Temple Avenue.
Thank you.
I have watched our city change. Nobody ever taught me how to come down here to the city hall meetings, so I'm honored to be here today. But I am here to tell you all that it is time. It is time for the change. It is time out for making excuses as to why our MPD officers are abusing our citizens. It is time out for making excuses as to why they do not have good customer service skills. It is time out for why they appear on our properties or pull us over without just cause. It is time for you all and the mayor of this city to do their job effectively and efficiently to protect us. We are the people of this city. Without us, there is no Memphis, Tennessee. And if they continue to murder our innocent, then all you're going to have left are the criminals. And I stand before you someone who has worked in some field of law enforcement, from courtesy officer to correctional officer, for 33 years. And I've always been by the books. If you are working in the field of law enforcement, you know what the laws are. You know right from wrong. And if your coworkers are not doing their job the correct way, and you are not reporting correctly, you are a part of the problem. It is time to get rid of all of the problems, from the top to the bottom. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Adams. Our next speaker is Ms. Catherine Lewis.
Good afternoon. My name is Catherine.
Good afternoon.
I'm sorry?
I was just speaking back. Good afternoon.
Hello, Dr. Warren. I'm well.
Name and address for the record, please, Mrs. Lewis. I'm sorry.
My name is Catherine, C-A-T-H-E-R-I-N-E, Lewis, L-E-W-I-S. I live at 3820 Treasure Hills Cove, Memphis. I'm wondering, on surface, even with the things that have been discussed, why this, these resolutions appear so weak to me? I wonder what makes you think that Police Florida was founded in 1823 and was part of the Patty rollers, the slave catchers? And that culture clearly still lives in that group today? How do you think these things that you're putting forth can make a difference? My thought is that it's such a deep psychological wound among people who carry such hatred in their hearts for other people. And if the other, we've known that here in the South for a while. And I think the nation learned it on January 6th of the last year. That's a lot of hate. That's a lot of sickness in a person. And so unless you're gonna do some deep psychological evaluation with these people, hopefully prior to hiring them, and certainly now that we see what's going on inside, nothing's going to change. And if nothing changes, nothing changes. So my offer, suggestion, is that you not only do these little things you're talking about, but you've got to do a deep psychological dive on people and not just ask them some surface stuff, because this is what we get. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Our last card is from Beth Hoffberg.
Hello again. My name is Beth Hoffberg, 717 South Riverside and 38103. Um, I do appreciate this ordinance about police training, as the last commenter just referred to. I also believe that this needs to be amended to address hiring. Um, as Councilman Carlisle, sorry to interrupt you, but Councilman Carlisle was, uh, talking about how if someone is training people and that person is training them inappropriately, we have to apply that exact same thinking to who's hiring. So we need an independent review of who's making the hiring decisions and who's even entering the police academy. Doesn't matter how we're training them, if they're already entering with these systemic racist beliefs, if they're entering with trying to have goals of abusing their power, they're entering because they're excited to beat somebody to death, they're entering because they're gonna text pictures of somebody, as we just saw the news come out as we've been sitting in here, that they are gonna text pictures of the person that they beat to their friends and family. Um, so I would like to see an additional ordinance, or possibly, if you can even amend this one, to include a regular review of hiring practices that include the psychological testing that was just referred to, that to include the beliefs of the people that are being hired to protect and serve the community, to ensure that people are being hired that do not have infractions in their records when they're getting promoted. Like, obviously, number 25 was addressing some of that, but that was only the body cam infractions. What about all the other infractions? Why were these people even in the Scorpion Unit? We need to see that people that are getting promoted do not already have infractions, that people that are coming from outside of Memphis, from other departments, that maybe had other issues already are not getting hired here, because we know that that is another problem that is happening. Um, so I would like to see a review of hiring, and I just gave you a bunch of ideas of how to do that. That ordinance seems to be missing from the ordinances 25 through 32. Please include that.
Thank you. Councilman Carlisle. Okay. So seeing no other members in the queue to speak on this item, Madam Comptroller, will you please prepare the screens for the vote?
Canali, yes. Carlisle, yes. Colbat, yes. Easter Thomas, yes. Ford, yes. Johnson, yes. Logan, yes. Morgan, yes. Vice Chairman Smiley, yes. Swerengen Washington, yes. Warren, yes.
That item passes. Madam Comptroller, will you please call item 28? Oh, Madam Chair, I'm sorry. Madam Comptroller, will you please reflect that I voted in favor of this?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Item number 28 is an ordinance amending the City of Memphis Code of Ordinances Vehicle and Traffic Code to clarify appropriate methods of enforcement of traffic violations. Up for first reading, ordinance number 5849, is sponsored by councilwomen Easter Thomas and Logan.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Uh, councilwoman, oh, councilwomen, Easter Thomas and Logan. You're recognized.
Thank you, Chair. Um, colleagues, myself and Councilwoman Logan are bringing this ordinance, and it is, I'll say it again, ordinance to amend City of Memphis Code of Ordinances Vehicle and Traffic Code to clarify appropriate methods of enforcement of traffic violations. Um, nationally, you can title this Driving Equality Act. Um, the purpose of this is to remove as much discrimination from stops as possible, to increase the amount of positive interactions between the police and the community. Um, pretextual data and pretextual stops are the use of minor traffic or equipment violations to pull over drivers police wish to investigate. And data shows that Black and other people of color are more likely to be stopped and searched despite not being more likely to carry any contraband that could be found within a search. And so this is a step towards moving to stopping discriminatory traffic stops. Um, also, it helps us redirect police time to other areas of concern, which may be in our communities, as well as removing the negative interactions that widen the gap of trust between police and the communities. And so this ordinance is putting forth that six reasonings for pretextual stops be removed, and those six are late registration under 60 days, relocation of temporary registration and license plate. So for example, if it's not where a license plate would be, it may be in the window. Um, that shouldn't be a reason for pretextual stop. Also, missing a single brake light, minor bumper issues or no bumper at all, um, which would also contribute to where a temporary registration on your license plate is. And then also obstructions from, such as items hanging from your rearview mirror. Um, those are the six items that I'm proposing in this ordinance to stop pretextual stops with those six items.
Uh, excuse me, staff. Do we have copies? Have copies been distributed of this?
Yes, you have copies. Yep. We got a lot of, it's a lot on your, um, yeah.
Yeah, I don't think I have it. Okay. Yeah, got it now.
Also, Chair, keep in mind, in the spirit of ordinances, this is the first reading.
Right.
And so as we've looked through a lot of ordinances today, if you want to take that, look at the examples nationally, the most recent one being in Philadelphia, um, they also are willing to share their data, it's also public, um, of how that has been helping them with stopping those reasons for pretextual stops in the last year. And so this ordinance, coupled with the Data Transparency Ordinance, will only help us provide data and transparency to really assessing to see what's working and what's not working. And so I would say that this should be passed also if we're coupling with the Data Transparency Ordinance together, so that we can see that data, but also be able to take this home, chew on it. Um, and in the next two weeks, when we come to the second reading, thinking about those six pretextual stops, and maybe you would like to add some to the ordinance as well.
Thank you. We have, uh, Councilwoman Johnson and Councilman Carlisle in the queue on this side.
Councilman Johnson? Sorry, Chair. I think my problem is...
Microphone, please.
I really don't think I have the ordinance to look at. That's my problem, because I'm looking at another ordinance that's similar to it, and it's not jiving, so if I could get a copy. I appreciate that.
I think some copies are being made now.
Okay, then, so I hold up on my questions until then. But the six items that you mentioned, I do support those six items, because they are minor, and just to stop somebody for that does seem like a waste of time. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Carlisle.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, yes, I've got, I've got a few questions. I read the Philadelphia, not the study, but I read the article that Councilwoman Easter Thomas said along, it's very interesting. Uh, just for, my questions will be, you know, other, as we're going forward over the next few weeks, like what other obstructions means? We may, I'm probably gonna get in trouble for this. We may need to extend the 60-day period to possibly longer, the way the clerk's office is pumping plates out these days. Probably gonna take some heat for that. Uh, just ridiculous. Sorry. Guys, it's just been a long day, and I know it's a serious subject, but, I mean, yeah, laugh a little. All right, so here's the thing that I don't understand within this, that I think we have to figure out, that is problematic, and it's gotta be addressed, but because it's a larger issue, which are temporary tags, and it's a much bigger issue. Uh, we've all talked about how they're problematic. A year ago, I saw somebody running them off at a Xerox at FedEx office. So I wanna figure out how to, how to address that without, you know, and again, so those are questions I've got. And then G and H, we can probably delete just because we don't have inspection stations anymore.
That's not on our...
Oh, that's... It's all right. It's fine. Uh, but everything else, I mean, I get, like, I understand that people want to claim that not having a bumper is a safety issue. It's, most of the time, I think those individuals probably would like to have a bumper. It's a financial issue, so it's just even more punishment. We talked about suspending licenses as a punishment, and it's just, it's very clear that that doesn't work, and it actually creates a harder cycle, because, you know, people can't get themselves to work in order to pay off the debt that they were already charged with. So I'm fine with almost everything on here. Um, I just wanna, the broad term of other obstructions I want to talk about next week or next meeting, and then how we deal with the temporary registration issue, because tags are kind of a problem, you know? That's, I mean, that's a problem. And there are plenty of solutions, by the way, like, we, in the state of Utah, they let people... people have certified vendors, meaning like you could own a tire business or an auto shop, and the state could deem you eligible to do a renewal for a tag. Seems like low-hanging fruit, but those are going to be my questions. I'm going to vote for this out of courtesy and respect for our process, and I'm sure to probably support it, just want to make sure that I understand very specifically those, those terms. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you to the sponsors.
Thank you. Councilwoman Johnson.
I came up with a question. If the law exists as it is today, will this ordinance automatically overturn the law?
Yes, because the law is the ordinance.
Okay, but I mean, I want to make sure if there's another step, don't come back late and say, well, you should have done this also. I don't know. I'm asking, I'm not an attorney.
Mr. Wade. So if you, just, I'm going to ask a clarifying question. Our, as it stands right now, how we govern motor vehicles and traffic codes, that's done by ordinance. So what this would do, whatever we currently have on the books, this will replace that. Is that correct?
Yes, but also understand that there is state law that mandates that police officers issue tickets for traffic violations. I'm not sure we can relax.
There we go.
Well, right, but, but, so I guess what this is doing, though, if it's that broad, is this not defining what those, what they can't stop for?
I think, I think this is probably fine. I don't even know statistically how many stops we make for these in the first place. Secondly, officers do have some discretion to issue warnings instead of tickets, and it may be that they wouldn't even have to engage the violators if they witnessed a violation. They could issue a warning by mail. But I don't, I mean, I think we just pass this on first reading and we explore it further.
Okay.
That's the way I look at it.
Okay, great.
I have another question.
The floor's still yours.
Thank you. If a policeman violates it, what kind of disciplinary action will he or she receive?
I don't know. I mean, I think that's where we have to have some discussion with Chief Crowe and Chief Davis. It seems like we're on a mission to discipline police officers if they violate an ordinance or state law, so they could be, I mean, we could be creating a problem for them, but I think we might want to absolve them from any discipline if, if they're going to follow our, our lead in this ordinance.
Okay.
But I think these are issues that we need to fully discuss as we go forward.
Thank you, Chair.
Okay. Councilwoman Morgan.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I, I do want to have more discussion and thought on this one. I'm, I'm sitting here kind of tuning it over in my mind and, you know, thinking about, you know, personal experience in mind, which is not the personal experience of everybody else's. And so I kind of want to take some time to hear back from other people. You know, for instance, where I was, I was driving down Poplar Avenue a few years ago, I had a taillight out, didn't know it, police pulls me over, I turn the interior lights on, I put my hands on the steering wheel, I talk to the officer, he explains it, I apologize, he writes me a warning that's, you know, written warning, and go home, check it out, I sure, I had a taillight out and get it fixed right away. And I would be more inclined to agree with this ordinance if we still had those service inspections in place that were going to catch those minor, you know, I guess, call them what they are, they're minor violations, and people would have the opportunity to get them fixed rather than, you know, I, I, this is a tough one, because I, I, I hear what Councilman Carlisle is saying, we do not want to penalize anybody economically that can't afford to do it. But at the same time, there is a reason we require two brake lights on a car, two headlights on a car, for windshield wipers to operate effectively, and there is a reason for someone at a government level somewhere to say that that is necessary for the safe operation of a motor vehicle. We don't have inspections anymore, and it's not the best use of officers' time if there's nearly any other call that they have in the queue. Almost any other queue, a call in the queue is going to take priority over this, and they're going to let it be and go to somewhere else, but I don't have a problem with them pulling me over. I don't have a problem with them pulling you ever, as long as it's done, as, as long as it's done in an indiscriminate and fair way. So, so that, now, if, and if it's can't or is not being done that way, then we have a further problem with how we are implementing the laws that we have, and I would have concerns about, again, everything we've been talking about today in regards to training and application of the law. But as it's written today, I don't see a, a fault or a problem with how it is. If there's a problem with how it's applied, then that is a more important evil that we need to root out within the department than adjusting the law. Thank you.
I see you in the queue, Councilman Carlisle.
I will defer to my colleagues.
Okay, Councilwoman, Easter Thomas followed by Councilman Warren.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Carlisle. Councilman Morgan, just response to that, just, I understand what you're saying, but everyone has different experiences, lived experiences, and, but also just to reiterate, just reiterate, colleagues, this, that is why this also has an accompanying ordinance. Nationally, everyone else passed a data bill with it. So we already had one, it's Resolution in 2020, that's being brought back as a ordinance by Councilman Smiley that should be in done in tandem with this so that we can see the results of those stops. So like you're saying, you're not sure if that's the best use, the data will be able to tell us so. And whatever the data tells us, it can show us how to move forward, whether to pivot or to keep on or whether to add on to this. So I think that that's why it's important that this is done in accordance with the data, and I just wanted to reiterate that. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Carlisle followed by Councilman Warren.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So here's a faster way. We're talking a lot about policing, and I'm just going to make the comment because sometimes, and I do this all the time, is I get so focused on one subject that we don't lift our heads, our heads up to talk about the bigger issue, right? Like, we keep talking about the economic impact, like, the majority of people that are driving in vehicles like that shouldn't be in vehicles because we don't have well-funded transportation, right? Like, we don't have public transportation the way we want it, so people are funding their job, you know, funding cars they shouldn't be driving. Yeah. Yes, it's simple math. If I have 1,900 people making an average salary of $65,000 a year plus OPEB, that's how you get to that percentage of the budget. Like, it's a terrible talking point. I hear you, but it's simple math. It's simple math. So it's 82% of our budget is personnel expenses. You calculate it out for me, and we'll talk about it.
Mr. Carlisle.
Yeah, I got it. So, so, so the point is, is that we do have an opportunity to make sure that we're doing things that have positive economic development and, and put more opportunities so people have more, be able to spend, are spending less money in utilities that we've, we talked about with TVA and MLGW, better access to transportation and better access to jobs and opportunities so that they can afford to drive or fix the cars that they have. That was my point.
Thank you. Councilman Warren.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think, you know, unfortunately, we live in a state now that has told us that we can't talk about racial profiling, and we can't talk about the history of slavery and how it affects society. And unfortunately, if you're African-American and you're driving a car, you may have a slightly different or even greatly different effect when you're pulled over by a policeman. So I mean, I, I taught my sons and also taught my African-American godsons that when you're pulled over by a policeman, you've got to be very careful because you don't know what they're thinking and what's been going on. But my African-American sons got a special talk because they could really, you know, have problems because we do not value young Black men in our society, as I said earlier. And that's, that's held over from slavery, and it's held over from Jim Crow, and it just was an example with Tyree. We had five African-American men who didn't value young Black men. And I think someone said it tonight, they were talking about how the original police departments were slave catcher police departments. And so we have all this sort of cultural stuff that if we don't recognize it as society, we can't fix it. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Warren. The only comment that I'd like to make, it, it goes back to the, it goes back to the temporary registrations, and when we talk about the proliferation of stolen cars here in Memphis. And so as we are talking about this, as we're deliberating this, I, I'm looking forward to hearing from MPD, I'd love for us to have somebody down here, because we have to strike a balance. You know, I was driving down BB King one night, somebody sideswiped my car and had one of those temporary tags. And so in that particular case like that, you want some, you want them to stop somebody along, along those lines. And so it, I guess, in the, in the current environment that we have, that, you know, we don't, we want to be careful as to not, you know, if we, we realize that the cars that are stolen most often are kids at Hyundai's, well, we don't want to necessarily want them disproportionately stopping kids at Hyundai's, although they are the most stolen, but we still have to strike some balance. So I'm looking forward to the conversation that we're going to have about this. This is the first reading, but we, we do have to, on this aspect of it, I'm in total agree with everything else, but I think we all recognize the issue that we have. At the same time, we have this issue, we have stolen cars out the yin yang for this, and so we have to strike that balance. I have comment cards. The first one is Mr. Daniel Boda. I hope I pronounced your name correctly. If I did, I apologize. And when you speak, please provide your name and home address for the record.
Good evening, councilmembers, and thank you very much. My name is Daniel Boda. My address is 3435th Street in Brooklyn, New York. I'm here on behalf of the Vera Institute of Justice, where I'm a senior program associate. And in that capacity, for a little over a year, I've worked with Decarcerate Memphis, advising them about their work on dated transparency. I, just a little bit about my background, I'm somebody who has worked for a number of years in police oversight. I spent seven years in New York City investigating civilian complaints about police misconduct, including spending an enormous amount of time investigating stops of, stops for traffic infractions and searches of vehicles. And I'm also a doctoral student at John Jay College in New York, studying for a PhD in criminal justice. I'm thankful for the opportunity to provide some, some feedback about this. At Vera Institute, I spend a good deal of my time working with jurisdictions that are struggling with a lot of the issues that I hear the council members talking about at this meeting. And so I would like to make some of what we've seen available for your, for your knowledge. So I may deviate from some of the comments that I prepared and speak to some of those issues. So one thing I want to point out is that these, these kind of statutes that a lot of jurisdictions around the country are beginning to grapple with and to begin to implement are intended to address a number of really significant harms. So obviously, there are harms that are aimed at by conducting these kinds of stops. But there are also really significant harms that are especially salient right now here in Memphis, right? Where you have a situation where a stop like this went terribly, terribly wrong. And that is not an uncommon occurrence around the country. Many, many, many cases in which police encounter a civilian and the person dies stem from traffic infraction enforcement. It's also the fact that racial disparities are just huge in traffic enforcement, but when you look and you dig down into that data, as we've done at Vera Institute, you see that those disparities are really concentrated in discretionary stops and stops where officers have a lot of leeway about whether or not they're going to enforce.
Mr. Boda, you've exceeded your time. We have other comments. This is just the first part, and, and colleagues, if there's really not going to be any objection to it, when we have the second reading on some of these items, I'm asking that we allow for public comment, which is not our comment practice to do so. But I think that with the gravity of the discussions that we're having, our changing the rules, amending the rules, to do that, we'll have to do that going forward. But we're going to have to ask for the other commenters.
Yes, thank you, sir.
But thank you for your comment today.
I'd just like to make ourselves available to you.
Please, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, this gentleman is in from New York. If, if, if I, if I might suggest, if there's a way that either we can extend his time or I think it may be more beneficial when we have this in committee, if we could schedule him to zoom in. And anyway, I'd like to hear more about the data, et cetera. Maybe that's the best thing to do.
Okay.
Your call.
Mr. Boda. Mr. Boda.
Sir.
Mr. Boda.
Sir.
You know, it is, you're visiting from out of town?
I'm sorry?
You're visiting from out of town?
I am visiting from out of town, yes.
Okay. And how long are you here?
And I'll be here until tomorrow morning.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I've invited him to give us written remarks so we can circulate to all the members if that's expeditions.
And would it be possible for you, when we are having these discussions, for you to perhaps zoom in and provide some commentary during our committee meeting? You know, I think that the way that we address it, we, we've never had a three-hour committee meeting addressing anything in the seven, in the seven-plus years that I've been on the council. Perhaps having a Zoom opportunity for you to provide similar commentary to the council in addition to those written remarks?
Yes, certainly, we'd be willing to do that, and I could make myself available for that. And I think also you'll see in the written remarks that we include references to some of the materials that we cite, so you can look at that evidence base around these policies as well.
Okay.
We also are working with jurisdictions that are attempting to grapple with these issues and developing a learning cohort of different jurisdictions, and so it may be something that this council wants to consider.
Okay. Thank, thank you very much.
Very much.
Thank you, thank you for coming down and speaking with us.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Paul Garner.
I thought you used to get two minutes, but, or three minutes, but, let's see. Paul Garner, 2004 Walker Avenue. I really don't want to be here. I really hate coming down here. I've been coming down here for 10 years on this stuff. I want to say I do support this ordinance. It needs to be amended. I would also say that, let's talk about ordinances, let's talk about resolutions. You say you want a resolution, I say, screw that. Pass something with some teeth. Pass an ordinance. If I need to remind folks, it is the duty of the council to both pass and enforce ordinances. And to the question of how do you enforce ordinances? Well, there's lots of ways you can enforce an ordinance. You can write consequences into that ordinance. You can consider cutting a budget for a department that has abused your resources and you are not getting a return on your investment. Crime is high. We got more cops than we've ever had, and it doesn't seem to make a difference. All the folks hemming and hawing about, oh, well, how did this even happen? Well, where were you for the past two years? Where were you for the past 10 years? I know it's nice sitting out there was here. When I was down here, you used to call me clurb when I'd come down here, talking about clurb. We need some basic police accountability. And we were demonized, we were criminalized, we were called lawbreakers at heart by Kim Conrad. I had a whole PowerPoint presentation that was just screenshots in violation of the consent decree of my Facebook. And I'm just one person. I broke down and cried the other day because I'm thinking about all the fucking people I have dragged down here to.
Ms. Garner. Ms. Garner. Ms. Young, have him removed.
I think about Bostick Matt, I think about Claudia Taylor. Those are people who are still alive that suffered from PTSD because of the way they were treated and then re-traumatized by dragging them through a clerk process that y'all had done jackdilly shit about.
You're right.
I've got, I've, I've been there, I've been there for like, for like, for like, for 10 years.
Ms. Garner, your time has expired.
I shake you, nothing will change.
Ms. Alex Hensley.
Stronger ordinances and resolutions.
Ms. Garner. Alex Hensley. Our next commenter is Beatrix Will-Awile. I apologize if I mispronounced your name. I apologize if I mispronounced your name.
I am the Reverend Beatrix Wile. I live at 1624 Faxon Avenue in Memphis, Tennessee, 38112. I'm speaking to urge you to end pretextual traffic stops, and item 28 is a step toward that goal. I am one of the pastors of Evergreen Presbyterian Church and the chaplain of Rhodes College. When one of my students dies, I am the one who has to do the memorial vigil. If you cannot get your police to stop killing black men, then the absolute least you can do is to prevent police from interacting with black men, and I'm thinking of my black students here. And this item would decrease potentially fatal interactions between my students of color and the police. Thank you.
I'm Adam Nelson, 1624 Faxon Avenue. Back in 2016, a young man that we'll call Jordan was pulled over for lacking insurance. He was fined, and because he did not pay the fine on time, his license was suspended. Jordan was then pulled over four times in the next three years. When he managed to restore his license, he could not afford his tags. When he got the tags, he couldn't afford insurance again. Since 2016, Jordan has been to court seven times, had all charges dropped five times, and paid almost $2,000 in fines and fees, all for failure to pay financial requirements. Forty-five percent of MPD's traffic citations are solely for financial requirements, and that's not counting tickets like brake lights, where the safety impact is close to nil, but there is some safety rationale behind the ticket. With these citations, we punish people like Jordan for driving while poor by fining them. A quarter of people in Shelby County drive without insurance. Almost a quarter of drivers in Tennessee drive on a suspended license. Ninety-three percent of them are poor. Status quo traffic enforcement preys on poor people over and over again, extracting fines that displace groceries and light bills to say nothing of rectifying the cause for the citation. We cannot continue to run this virtual debtor's prison in the name of safety theater. This ordinance leaves much of the wealth extraction machine intact, but I urge you to pass this partial measure that will cut back on some of these stops and lift the boot a couple of inches from the necks of struggling people.
My name is Amber Sherman, 6070 North Belgrove Cove, Memphis, Tennessee. First, I just want to say, as a constituent of Councilwoman Patrice Robinson, and considering that this incident happened in her council district, I'm honestly pissed and disgusted that she didn't feel like this council meeting was important enough, or we're discussing ordinances to prevent this.
Name and address for the record.
Huh? I said it.
Address.
I'm pissed and disgusted that she didn't feel like this council meeting, where ordinances were being discussed to prevent this happening to someone else, was important enough for her to attend. But she was available last week to do an interview with CNN when they called her. Like, seriously, where are your morals at? You on vacation, but you were open and available to be real performative last week, and now you have a chance to actually take action, you're MIA. In reference to this agenda item, I agree that it should be passed, but I also implore the council to amend this ordinance to add in the language from the ordinance to decarcerate Memphis, has sent to all of the council members, and that ordinance of which was actually written by the same person who wrote the Philadelphia Driving Equality Law. Lastly, I just want to say, it's really concerning to me that the majority of black folks being murdered by police are initially making contact via these pretextual traffic stops, and Councilwoman Worth Morgan is pushing back against that. We're telling you, these are the changes you can make, and they need to happen to prevent deaths and help us to feel some piece of safety when interacting with police, and you're pushing back. I know you're so deep into your white male privilege bag, that it's real hard for you to understand that what Black Memphisans, the majority of this city go through, but we're very much heavily discriminated against, and you should be ashamed and honestly embarrassed to speak in such ignorance.
Good evening, council. I'm Kathy Temple. 1536 Tanner Street, Douglas, North Memphis, Tennessee. Write it down. Some of y'all know me, some of you might recognize my picture. Folks have come from a political standpoint. Ordinances, I'm coming to you as a mother. I have a stepson who's an MPD officer, and my youngest son has been pulled over more than a dozen times in 2022 alone, and three times in January alone because of a faulty wiring, which the par- it's my car. You ain't pulled me over once. I'm looking at you because of the pushback. You shouldn't have never opened your mouth, man. That was wrong, dude. You don't live this life. What won't happen is this council and this MPD will not kill my son over a traffic stop.
Our next speaker is Mr. Casio Montez. Okay. So seeing no other members in the queue to speak on this item, Madam Comptroller, will you please prepare the screen for the vote on this item?
Canali, yes. Carlisle, yes. Collet, yes. Easter Thomas, yes. Ford, yes. Johnson, yes. Logan, yes. Morgan Epstein. Vice Chairman Smiley, yes. Swerengen Washington, yes. Warren, yes. Chairman Jones, yes.
That item passes. Madam Comptroller, will you please call item 29?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Item number 29 is an ordinance to amend the City of Memphis Code of Ordinances, Chapter 21 Motor Traffic and Vehicles, Article 1, General Provisions and Definitions, to require the Division of Police Services to use only appropriately marked law enforcement vehicles to conduct traffic stops. Up for first reading, ordinance number 5850, sponsored by Councilwoman Logan.
Thank you. Councilwoman Logan.
Thank you, Chair. Colleagues, it's important that, as we've said today, it's important that we continue to take deliberate steps and clear actions to keep the citizens of Memphis safe during routine traffic stops. This ordinance before you today will ensure that when citizens are stopped, they can be confident in the legitimacy of the stop and that it is being conducted by the Memphis Police Department. The intent is that appropriately marked law enforcement vehicles conducting traffic stops will be less threatening for citizens. And I want to read some of it. Whereas the Memphis City Council desires to perform, reform practices of the City of Memphis, Division of Police Services, that may jeopardize the safety of the citizens of Memphis. Whereas the City of Memphis has granted authority to the running of automobiles within its corporate limits under Tennessee Code Annotated 55-8-101 in Section 68 and 77 of the city's Home Rule Charter, which vests the Legislative Council or body of the City of Memphis with police powers to regulate the use of its streets, alleys, thoroughfares, rights of way, and public places for the protection of the health, safety, and welfare of its citizens. And this ordinance shall, the provisions of this order are hereby severable, and if any of these sections, provisions, sentences, clauses, phrases, and/or held unconstitutional void, the remaining of this ordinance shall be in full effect and full force. And I still move.
That item has been moved by Swerengen Washington, she beat you to it, seconded by Councilwoman Johnson. Councilwoman Johnson, you're in the queue, followed by Easter Thomas and Warren. You recognize Councilwoman Johnson.
Okay, I have a question. In reference to this, are you saying, under no circumstance, can a officer stop someone in another car, not the marked cars? Are you saying, under no circumstances?
No, I'm not saying that. I'm saying, I was saying, routine traffic stops.
Ms. Temple, the next outburst like that, I'm going to ask you to be removed, but please be respectful, folks. Ms. Johnson.
That's my question.
This is dealing with just routine traffic stops.
Again, are you saying that the regular officers cannot or will not be able to make such a stop if they're not in one of these specified marked cars?
If it's in their pursuit, if they're on my car in a specialized unit or something like that, in pursuit of what they do that's different from traffic stop, we're just talking about routine traffic stops and traffic laws. That's what this is saying, speaking to.
Okay. I'm back to, again, what type of discipline, which we will have to work that out.
We will have to work that out, definitely. We'd have to work through that. And this is the first reading, but it is an attempt for us to make certain that we are, as we said earlier, providing an opportunity for citizens to know when their stop of the legitimacy of the stop, because there are other people with unmarked cars that look similar. And so we don't want to increase the threat in traffic stops. We want to make it really simple. You know, this is a police stopping you. Now, if you robbed a bank and you in pursuit, that's separate, but we're talking about just, you know, routine traffic stop.
Okay, I understand that. I guess my, turn, I lost my thought, just a quick. Okay. At the end, it says the effective date. In order to implement this, there's going to have to be time in order for those cars to be striped, or those cars markings or something to be changed. Okay, how are you going to use the basic police cars and change them so people will know, okay, they don't want anything but a traffic stop?
The police cars are-
If I may, Ms. Johnson, I think you're reversing it. Think about a regular plain white Charger.
Okay.
What she's saying is that that car can't be used for routine traffic stops.
Okay, unmarked car.
Unmarked, right.
Okay. I thought you had a separate set of cars. No, no.
Saying like, if you see, you know, there might be white, there might be black.
Right.
Those can't make, if I run the red light.
Right.
They can't pull me over.
I'm in agreement, total agreement.
Now, if I'm doing something egregious, yes, they have a duty, they have a sworn oath to uphold the law. We're saying just for routine stops, disregard the red light, they didn't come to a full stop before they made a right-hand turn. That's what we're talking.
It has to be defined, that's the key. To define routine traffic stop. If you don't, then it's very big-
The law does.
I think the issue that we're going to come down to, and we've got time, but you're going to have to define in writing what is considered a routine traffic stop, or you're going to end up in an ambiguous mess. So it's going to have to elbow grease into, a routine traffic stop is defined as a single brake light out, excess speeds of five miles an hour below, 10 miles, whatever that is, or else you're going to end up in an administrative mess if an officer pulls somebody over in an unmarked car, and they say, well, it was routine to me, and then there's no document that says this is routine under city ordinance. So I think that's going to be the kicker about what that is.
State laws, traffic laws that are on the books now.
Right. And so, you know, I think this might be helpful as we're talking about this and contemplating this. You know, thank, knock on wood, I hadn't gotten a ticket in a while, but perhaps if we could look at a ticket and see those different citations, we are, I think we're sort of pulling for straws here, trying to see what would be one of those things, but if we, you know, if you look at the old tickets, you could see, well, they pulled me over for failure to yield, or this and that. I think if we had that in front of us, so perhaps staff from the standpoint, as we're researching this, we can look at some of those things, and that will go to helping us define what those routine traffic stops are. It could be some that we, you know, as we spelled out in the previous ordinance, six different things here, you know, it could be 30 of them, and we can say, well, these 15 here meet the definition of routine traffic stop. So I hope that we can have that. Keep in mind, these are ordinances that we're talking about now. These are first readings, and that's some of the contemplation that we're going to have for this. Councilwoman Warren.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I've been waiting for you to call me to say that I think that this is going to be taken care of as we define what a routine stop is. I wanted to make sure that we weren't talking about not using unmarked cars to stop people who are doing 120 miles an hour on the interstate and risking everyone's life.
That's not routine traffic stop.
That is not routine traffic stop. I think the devil's in the details. This is our first reading. Let's go ahead and pass this, and let's get the details fixed. Thank you.
We have comment cards from Gillian Wenhold, and I apologize if I mispronounced your
Gillian Wenhold, 683 North Idlewild Street, 38107. So I'm here to support this ordinance, but also I would urge you to include an amendment that will ban the use of plain clothes in these traffic stops. Now, having an officer in uniform with clear identification provides another layer of security. And also, on that note, I'm not sure if y'all have all seen the community demands, but I would urge y'all to listen to the community, like, these ordinances are, sure, there's something, but the resolutions and the statements and the apologies are just lip service until y'all put action to them. By passing the ordinances, by removing, or stopping pretextual traffic stops, by removing law enforcement from traffic completely, and really, like, actually tangibly listening to the community and bringing in voices of people who are directly impacted by these processes, who know them intimately, bring them into the decision-making process as you're doing this. Thank you.
Thank you. Richard Massey, followed by Amber Sharman.
Richard Massey, 614 Coaster Drive, 72364. There have been 622 people killed by law enforcement during traffic stops in the last five years in this country. Of course, people of color have disproportionately been impacted by this preventable crisis. One of those people so happened to be one of Memphis's own on January 7th. Now we have the ample opportunity to acknowledge the humanity of Tyree Nichols, which is what those officers ultimately failed to do. By ensuring that inherently flawed practices such as pretextual traffic stops, the use of unmarked vehicles, and plainclothes officers to account for low-level offenses are removed from protocol, to establish that a broken taillight, expired tags, a dangling air freshener, failing to signal and other minor violations never result in a reprehensible murder of a man again. The phrase "I am a man" has resonated throughout our city since the sanitation strikes of 1968 galvanized the country. I'm asking that the council invokes their consciousness and looks inward and realizes that just because they won't have the fear of being pulled over in their affluent neighborhoods, that doesn't mean that the community doesn't have to take an extended breath every time they see blue lights behind them.
My name is Amber Sherman. I live at, what, 677, 6070 North Bell Grove Cove, 3115. Specifically, as a resident of Super District 8, as one of Cheyenne Johnson's constituents, you always ask these questions that don't make no sense. And it's real concerning to me that I'm telling you, we need to fix these things and get these ordinances in place to save black lives, and you asking dumb questions. And it really concerns me as my councilmember, because you're supposed to do your research. You should know these things ahead of time. Everybody else got their stuff together, and you always pushing back. That's real anti-black, Cheyenne. That's real anti-black. So it's real concerning to me. And I would hope that you would do your due diligence better and actually answer the emails when we email you, because I emails you, you don't respond. And when we call your office, I don't get calls back. But you always show up for the council meeting with some bullshit.
Seeing no other members in the queue. Madam Comptroller, will you please prepare the item for the vote?
Collette, yes. Esther Thomas, yes. Ford, yes. Johnson, yes. Logan, yes. Morgan abstained. Vice Chairman Smiley, yes. Swerogen Washington, yes. Warren, yes. Chairman Jones, yes.
Thank you. That item passes. Ms. Sherman, you will not be allowed to address the council again in this meeting. So, I just wanted to address that. And anybody else that comes and disrespects this council, not us individually, I understand, but that was directed towards an individual, not the council, that would not be tolerated. Madam Comptroller, will you please call item 30?
Item number 30 is an ordinance to establish a public safety reporting protocol in regard to disposition by the Memphis Police Department of recommendations by the Civilian Law Enforcement Review Board, better known as CLRB, to the Memphis Police Department regarding CLRB's disposition of complaints involving police misconduct, the use of deadly force by police officers, and deaths and injuries of persons occurring while in police custody. Up for first reading, ordinance number 5851, is sponsored by councilmembers Smiley, Canali, and Carlisle.
Thank you, Madam Comptroller. Councilmen Smiley, Canali, and Carlisle, floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This ordinance is essentially amending what we are currently calling CLRB, and I think we've all heard from Mr. Kirkwood talking about what, what CLRB needs in order to have teeth, and I will reference and pay honor to the late Raph White, when he talks, when he spoke specifically about CLRB essentially being a toothless tiger, and I think it's a pastime that we give CLRB the teeth that it needs. Specifically, as it relates to this ordinance, section three, well, section two, I'm going to read those, because I think those are very important. The Memphis Police Department shall be required to cooperate fully with all documents and witness requests from the Civilian Law Enforcement Review Board. Section three, the Civilian Law Enforcement Review Board shall be given the following powers: investigative authority, ability to audit Memphis Police Department reports and policies, and ability to research and put forth policy recommendations for the implementation by the Memphis Police Department. And I so move. And in addition to that, as we talk about CLRB, this piece of paper means nothing if when it comes to budget time, we do not allocate appropriate funds so the CLRB can do their job. As I think Reverend Andre spoke specifically about which side will you stand on? Will you be lukewarm and do nothing, or will you stand on the side of justice? I hope you support this ordinance.
Thank you. Would any other makers or co-sponsors of this like to speak on this item? Well, we have comment cards from Manalveen Branson. Oh, Ms. Bradshaw, okay.
How y'all doing?
Good evening.
Marquita Bradshaw, 43, 71 Visigo. I wanted to say, I'm going to tell you a little bit about my personal story.
Name an address for the record, please. Okay.
You do that, you do that a lot. Like, after people say it, you ask them to do it again.
Ms. Bradshaw, go on with your comments, please.
But, in, in 1995, I was a victim of excessive force by police officers doing their jobs improperly, going door-to-door, and they forced their way inside of my house, and I was nine months pregnant, and I fell over armchair and went immediately into labor for 17 hours, and had to have an emergency C-section. There was not a clear and transparent process to actually report what happened to me, because I was young and I just didn't know, right? But, when I got involved with Mid-South Peace and Justice, and I was the organizing director with Memphis United, we came here, and we talked about things that can be put in place to not only make it safer for black Americans when they interact with police, but also that would address the type of policing that has been going on in Memphis when it comes to the root culture of excessive force. And we see those young men, and we look through a restorative justice lens, we fail them, because the independent process of CLRB should also have a way that they review quarterly mental health, the firm that does the mental health assessments, to make sure that we are not continually hiring people who have these violent tendencies. And so, not only, because if they didn't get hired, Mr. Tyree Nichols will still be alive. And not just him, this is not the first person. And as a mother, this is, we keep coming here, and we keep asking for certain things. If the police department were to cut costs about getting lapel cameras that was tamper-proof, we wouldn't be having these ordinances about, and these discussions wasting the people's time about how those cameras should operate. They spent money on military-grade weapons instead of tamper-proof lapel cameras. So, as a duty of the councilmen, that, in this people's council chambers, this is, this is people's council.
Ms. Bradshaw.
And so, I want to say that
Ms. Bradshaw, your time is exp, your time expired about a minute ago.
Please give me 30 more minutes.
Ms. Bradshaw. We have other people to hear from. You could come back and speak on another item, Ms. Bradshaw. Ms. Bradshaw, you are interrupting other folks' time, that we have other items, other members of the public that would like to speak. We go on, we're treating everybody equally, Ms. Bradshaw. Ms. Bradshaw. Ms. Bradshaw, this is a meeting of the council and the public, not a meeting of the public. Ms. Bradshaw. Ms. Bradshaw, I'm going to ask you to sit down so we can hear from the next person.
Mr. Chairman, a point of information. We have two more items, do we not?
Yes, we do.
Can Ms. Bradshaw not pull an item and speak on each of those?
Yes, she can.
And finish up her comments?
Yes, she can.
Thank you, sir.
Ms. Theron Bond is our next speaker.
If one of you all is pulled over and have a less than pleasant interaction with police, whom do you call? CLRB is for us unelected folk to use as an intermediary for justice. Members of CLRB don't have everything they need to be successful, but our city has a history of funding what it wants. We the people pay your council salaries, we the people pay Mayor Strickland's salary, we the people pay the police chief and all associated members of MPD's salary. When we the people lose a member of our community, it is us who bear the emotional and financial implications. When someone from the City of Memphis is sued as a result of officer-involved murders or incidents, guess what? It's we the people who pay the price. So I ask you all today, are we getting our monies worked? We the people have repeatedly asked for all MPD officers who were involved in the murder of Tyree Nichols to be named, yet we are constantly told to wait while we are fed some procedural reason as to why we can't have it now. Seeing as police provide a service, and we the people pay for the service, in any other business, when a service is paid for and not adequately rendered, a refund is in order, and business is taken elsewhere, or new leadership is brought in to help with company morale, why does that not apply in this case? Is the value of what we as citizens in this city are required to give being positively reciprocated back to us? Depending on who you ask, what neighborhood you live in, and what your interaction with elected leadership is here, and the police chief are, your answers will differ. With this in mind, I ask that you not only devote resources to fully fund CLRB so that it can become fully operational and more inclusive of the community, even if that means diverting funds from another area of the budget composed of elements that have not been serving us. I would also encourage you to formally oppose and lobby against the passage of Tennessee Senate Bill 591, which would abolish oversight boards and give all power to the mayor. We do not need that here in Memphis.
Thank you. Seeing no more speakers in the queue to speak on this item, Madam Comptroller, will you please prepare the item for the vote?
Canali, yes. Carlisle, yes. Esther Thomas, yes. Ford, yes. Johnson, yes. Logan, yes. Morgan, yes. Vice Chairman Smiley, yes. Swerogen Washington, yes. Warren, yes. Chairman Jones, yes.
That item passes. Madam Comptroller, will you please call?
Chair.
Yes.
May I make a statement?
Yes, sir.
Okay. The item that we just voted on with civilian law enforcement.
Will you put your microphone up a little bit, Ms. Ford?
I want everybody to know, when he spoke today, some of you all may not have been here, but the council, he was kind of asking for $1.5 million to make sure, and we're trying to make sure we put it in the budget for this year. I just want everybody to know that, that's what he can be able to be capable of, to hire the ones that he needs to take care of some of the business that you all need done, okay? But yes, that was, y'all may not have been here today, but that's what we talked about already, putting that money in there. He did not want to ask, and I think our chair told him he needed to. And that's why we decided we wanted to do that. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Comptroller, will you please call item 31, please?
Item number 31 is an ordinance to establish an independent review process of Memphis Police Department incidents
Thank you, sir.
involving the use of excessive, unnecessary, and/or deadly force by police officers, and deaths or serious injuries of persons occurring while in police custody. Up for first reading, ordinance number 5832, is sponsored by councilmembers Smiley, Carlisle, and Logan.
Thank you, Councilmen Smiley, Carlisle, and Logan. You're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This, along with the litany of ordinances we've produced today, I think it goes toward, speaks to this council's belief and understanding that, at the end of the day, our responsibility and job is to ultimately bend to the will of the people. And I think we've had several individuals who came and addressed this body, and rightfully so. Y'all do elect us, y'all do determine what policies are appropriate in our city. And one of the things that I've been hearing is ways that we can have an independent review of the body worn cameras, all information that the Memphis Police Department. And one of the things that our council spoke specifically about is the lack of communication between the council and administration. I know that some folks believe that the council saw the body count footage way before anyone else, but the truth of the matter is, for me and almost every single member here, we didn't see the body count footage until everyone else saw. I think there was a couple of members who saw it like two or three hours before, and that's concerning. That's concerning from a transparency standpoint, that's a concern as it relates to, you know, at the end of the day, we represent you, and we can't put the people, we cannot put the City of Memphis in a best position possible if we don't have the information either. So this ordinance speaks specifically to the process of how the council will have access to body count footage when there's allegations of excessive force that result in bodily injury or anything, anything more serious than that. And with that, we know our, we know our jobs here, and I go back to something that's continually said that, you know, Memphis has set the standard, we set the standard by passing effective legislation, and I think this does that. So with that, I so move.
Thank you. That item has been moved by Councilman, Vice Chair Smiley is seconded by Councilman Carlisle. I didn't know if any of the other co-sponsors wanted to address it any.
Let me just go on it down there.
Vice Chair Smiley.
Yes, sir.
I don't know if members of the audience have a copy of this, but
Oh, I don't know.
Just in reviewing it, would you please read what would be
The protocol?
Number three, well, C and D in particular.
I will read C and D. Upon receipt of notification from a member of the Memphis City Council, the City Attorney will inform City Council members of the complaint during an attorney-client privilege meeting. At that time, the council may elect to conduct an independent review of the complaint. D, if the council chooses to conduct the independent review of the complaint, well, independent review, the council attorney shall be authorized to obtain the services of an independent consultant or investigator with a background in policing law and/or civil rights. The City Council Attorney will send written notice to the council of the decision to conduct the independent review to the mayor, director of police services, the city attorney. Upon receipt of the written notice, the director or chief of police services shall send the council attorney within five business days copies of the original incident and/or arrest reports, and any video recordings of the incident from the body cameras of all officers at the scene of the incident, and/or any cameras in the area owned by the City of Memphis. I think if we talk about, you know, specifically, the reason says any video recordings, for those of you who had the unfortunate, the unfortunate circumstance of happening to watch the Tyree Nichols video footage, if we paid particular attention, if we wanted to be transparent about it, the body cameras didn't tell us a thing. All it told, all the thing the body cameras told us, there was a young man suffering. We would not have known anything without that Scott Cop cam. They were hiding their body cameras, they were doing everything to obstruct view, our view of what transpired. We need all information associated with what transpired in any of these things. And I think the most concerning thing for me is the very first video of Mr. Hempel, because if you pay particular attention to what Mr. Hempel said after Mr. Nichols escaped, he said, "If you catch him, when they catch him, I hope they stump his ass." And that's problematic. If we want to change, if we want to create change as it relates to culture, we have to drive out anyone with that mentality, and we can't drive out anyone with that mentality if we don't know. I believe this ordinance gets us closer to where we want, in which is everyone wants to see justice, and I think this gets us closer there.
Thank you. I would, before, call for the vote on this item, I just want to commend you, Vice Chair Smiley, Carlisle, and Logan for this. Members of the public, what we did not have prior to this, we didn't have a mechanism in place for us even to request it. And so, I hope that you look at it from the standpoint, we are addressing this concern. This is just the beginning of things. We're not going to solve everything on February 7th. We're not. However, we want to put things in place, and ordinance requires three readings, but I really appreciate this part, what we're addressing. In a similar incident, hopefully we won't have a similar incident to Mr. Nichols, but if we do, we have this in place to address that. But if we do, we have this in place to address that, and from a release in the body cam, any other type of video evidence that we have of incidents like this, this gives us the abilities to do so. So thank you for doing that. Seeing no other members in the queue, council members, the screens are ready for your vote.
Canali, yes.
Canali, yes. Carlisle, yes. Ford, yes. Johnson, yes. Logan, yes. Morgan, yes. Vice Chairman Smiley, yes. Swearingen Washington, yes. Warren, yes. Chairman Jones, yes.
That item passes. Colleagues, I apologize, I did not recognize the citizens who wanted to speak on this item, so I'm going to do so now, although we do have, that vote was approved unanimously. So I'm going to hear from Elijah Kennedy, followed by Reverend Edith Love, Reverend Andre Johnson, and Ms. Marquita Bradshaw.
2012, Walker Avenue, Memphis, 38104. I think that when it comes to this ordinance, then one thing, now that it's been passed, which is great to consider, is that Colorado actually has kind of led, one example that could be followed, in which they required footage to be released within 21 days for any cases where individuals have needed hospitalization after interactions with police. And so I know that an investigation will be prompted according to this ordinance, but the public also should be privy to that information if there is any footage, which sometimes there is not, but whether it's sky cam or body cam, I think that it would be simplest if there was just a system in place that was enforced where 20 days passes, footage is released if someone is hospitalized because of an interaction with the police. Or there's no reason why that shouldn't also be expanded to include a situation in which a complaint has been made because of an interaction with the police as well, and there's footage related to it. And that would simplify things because investigations can take time, but if video data is there, then it might as well be available to the public if there's any scrutiny, whether an interaction with the police was according to the policies that are supposed to be followed. And also, if that had been followed, then the families of Jalen McKenzie would also by now have seen footage of the interaction that led to his death as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kennedy. Reverend Edith Love?
Edith Love, 2005 Nelson Avenue, Memphis, Tennessee, 38104. According to a study done by Rutgers University, the top four fatal police violence countries practiced slavery until the second half of the 19th century. These issues are not distant history, they are a direct legacy. You see that seal up there on the county, right behind you? Cotton. It's right there. Slavery is there too. According to mappingpoliceviolence.org, police in this country killed at least 1,123 people last year with only nine days where they did not kill anybody. How can we sit here politely debating when people who look like me are protected and people who look like Tyree are born with targets on their back? It's the system, y'all. This is the system, and I appreciate all the effort you're putting into crafting nice language and laws that will help, but we need to overthrow the whole damn thing. This system was set up to protect whiteness and wealth, and it still does. And it kills people. And it's not okay. This is not okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Reverend Andre Johnson? Is he still present? Okay, Marquita Bradshaw?
May I have a clarifying question before I start my comments?
Yes, ma'am.
Councilman Smiley, does that include the Civilian Law Enforcement Review Board getting it also?
So I'm going to speak to it, and I know Allen will correct me if I'm wrong, he's a fine attorney. The state usurped what the council can do. The state took away subpoena power from CLERB, and I'm not sure if you were here earlier when we talked about the current bill that's currently before the state, the State House, there's another bill coming that, you know, may essentially do away with the work we're doing here today. What we're doing here today, we're essentially going to try to get what we can done in place, but we're also going to have to come up with a plan B because CLERB, as we know it, is under attack, not by this body, it's under attack by the state.
It's a nationwide attack to have an independent review body outside of the policing culture.
And before, before you get started, I don't want to, I want you to better utilize all of your time. I think there is a prior piece of legislation that we proposed that requires Memphis Police Department to cooperate with CLERB. This body will cooperate with CLERB, but in order for CLERB to have access to certain things, this body has to utilize its authority to get information, and then hopefully be a, we will be able to, not hopefully, we will turn it over to CLERB because we believe that our city, our society, our police department will function better with civilian oversight. Go ahead, you got your two minutes.
So with that being said, I do believe that the independent process should also include a way for whistleblowers to come forward through CLERB so they do not have to go through internal affairs, because sometimes the police don't police themselves too well. And also, in that, in that, in that process of civilian law enforcement review, that they actually review the person that has the contract that does the mental health assessment quarterly to ensure that the proper people are being hired and that the proper, that the proper assessments are happening for our officers to make sure that we have a healthy culture that actually protects people and don't racial profile and kill people for traffic stops like Stephen Askew and Jesse Hunter in today. And so this has been going on since Jesse Bowlin, where the Civilian Law Enforcement Review Board was created, and eventually people forget to say their names. And I just don't want you to forget that it was other people that died before. This young man that don't get to come home from work and provide for his family, see his son get married, see his child get married, he don't get to put them through school, he gets, he's not going to see any other life events. Thank you.
And Ms. Bradshaw, thank you for being here today. I don't want it to go unnoticed that, you know, you took off from work. I think that type of commitment to justice is where we all should be, willing to sacrifice to make sure our city, make sure our brothers and our sisters are okay. So thank you, thank you on behalf of this council, we appreciate what you're doing. And also, and I appreciate your, your suggestion about whistleblower, I think we can take that into consideration, and Attorney Wade and our chief security officer, they're going to have a lot more work on their plate, but it'd be for justice. Thank you.
Madam Comptroller, will you please call item 32?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Item number 32 is an ordinance to amend the City of Memphis Code of Ordinances relating to public safety for the City of Memphis Law Enforcement to collect and regularly report data regarding traffic stops, arrests, use of force, and complaints. Up for first reading, ordinance number 5853 is sponsored by council members Smiley and Carlisle.
Thank you, Councilmen Smiley and Carlisle.
All right. In 2020, this body took up a particular resolution that I sponsored, and at that point in time, it was called the Memphis Police Department Transparency Portal. And I think we all remember what happened when we first started talking about the Memphis Police Department Transparency Portal in 2020. The Memphis Police Association walked down here and told us we shouldn't be doing it. I think we remember Memphis Police Department's director at the time, he walked down here and told us we shouldn't be doing it. And more specifically, he said, "We didn't have the funding to do it." We kept pushing, we kept pushing, and ultimately we received what's called Reimagine Policing, the ISB Dashboard Portal. The administration would like to take credit for that. Some people will give me credit for that. I don't want any credit for that. I give each and every one of you credit for that because that's what you called for. So kudos to each and every one of you. And here we, here we are again, talking about police transparency. Decarcerate Memphis, thank you once again. I want to make sure it's very public for all of your hard work with creating this transparency ordinance. I think one of the things that stands out to me about this particular ordinance is what happens upon the initial encounter. The police officer will be required to take a very detailed report. The report speaks to a lot of different things. I think what makes it different, it talks about the reason for the encounter, the date and time of the stop, the year and make them out of the vehicle, the primary reason for the stop, the actions related to the traffic stop that will warrant such a check or stop. If the traffic stopped resulting in any use of force, it'd be detailed in the report, why, if there was an arrest. But at the very end of it, I know a lot of you always ask, you know, what's your badge number, what's your name? In this particular report, the officer will provide his, his or her badge number, his or her name, and if there's any code associated with the stop, it will also be provided in the report. More particularly, at the very end of that, the police officer will then sign it, the individual who stopped will then sign it, that police officer will go to his vehicle, take a copy of it, take one himself, and also provide it to the citizens. I think that's the type of transparency we need going forward if we want to ensure people are safe. So once again, I also want to thank Councilman Carlisle, because I think he was one of the first people to say, you know, "I can support this." I don't think we give some of the members the credit that they deserve when they standing on the right side, so thank you, Councilman Carlisle. And with that, I so move.
Thank you. That item has been moved by Vice Chair Smiley, seconded by Councilman Warren. We have Councilwoman Easter Thomas in the queue.
Thank you, Chair. I'd just like to be added as a co-sponsor, since this is closely coupled.
I would hope that you want to be added as a co-sponsor.
Since this is closely coupled to the Driver Equality Act ordinance we previously passed.
Okay, so, you know, my, my last statement, so first of all, thank you, Councilwoman Easter Thomas, and I want to speak specifically to Councilman Morgan, because I remember in 2020, we had this conversation about transparency. And I think the very first person, and I'm going to be honest with you all, I was surprised. The very first person who jumped on the transparency ordinance in 2020 was Councilman Morgan, so I hope that he jumps on this transparency ordinance, because we started this work in 2020, but in 2023, we're going to finish it because Tyree Nichols' life mattered to the people of Memphis, and we're going to do everything we can to so there is no another Tyree Nichols in this country. Thank you. And, okay, so hopefully everyone would sponsor it, and if you don't want to be sponsoring, please speak up and tell the people you don't.
Yes, so please add that all council members will be co-sponsors of this particular ordinance. We don't have any other council members in the queue to speak on this item, however, we do have comment cards from the public. First, we're going to hear from Laramie Wheeler. Yeah, we're going, yeah, we know, we're going to hear from the people before we voted, I inadvertently had public comments before we voted on it the last time. So this time, we are hearing from the public before we take the vote.
My name is Laramie Wheeler, 1001 Monticello, Memphis 38107. I hope and I expect that you all support and pass the ordinances that Decarcerate Memphis has presented to you, that were professionally written and well thought through. I know that these things could take time and that they require readings, so my question to you, because people are dying, is how fast can you read? How quickly can you get this done? Because today, you have made some exceptions, today you have pushed some things through. Tyree was the fourth person to have died within just a matter of days, maybe a month, two months. How many more people have to die at a traffic stop for you to do your job that we elected you to do? I want to remind you that you are elected. I live in District 7, Super District 8, I vote. This whole room votes. My generation, we vote. The generation after me, they vote too, and they're learning, and we educate. So if you want this seat next time, do the right thing. You're in this seat because either people are not informed and they vote for you anyway, nobody showed up to vote, and so you just happen to win, or because people believe that you can do this. So you decide why you have this seat. Do the right thing. Decarcerate Memphis gave you a very detailed presentation on December 6th. You have the data, you have everything that we could find. On January 7th, Tyree was beaten to death, and today is February 7th, and we are still talking about it. What happened to Tyree will never happen to me. It won't. And it, it won't happen to my children. Why do we have to constantly come down here and ask you to do the right thing? You work for us, we put you in those seats. Do the right thing. Thank you.
Our next, our next comment card is from Alice Pettit Miller. That's not allowed. That's not allowed. That's not allowed. But you can, you can speak, you have the right to speak for your two minutes.
Miss Informed, my name's Alice Miller, 2038 Walker Avenue, and I want to thank you for the climate, for one, I see so much more give and take and respect for public, and it needs to keep going up that way, but I want to, first of all, say, I see a big difference from over the years. I primarily want to say, I, the, I want to see the ordinances that were recommended by Decarcerate Memphis, I want to see them passed, and I understand this is first reading, I want to commend you all for making ordinances here, that seeing this, not just resolutions, that we need things with teeth, strong teeth with it, the eyes and the heart, as we all know, are upon us, we feel us, but let's show example from this at this point on, definitely. And just want to say, let's, you know, move on, we're going to continue to move on. Thank you so much tonight.
Thank you. Our next comment card is from Carrie Schwartz. Mr. Paul Klein.
My name is Paul Klein, and I live at 1841 Black Bear Circle East in Cordova. I am in support of this ordinance for data transparency. I'm going to start out by going to Wikipedia, the expression "the elephant in the room" is a metaphorical idiom for an important or enormous topic, question or controversial issue that is obvious or that everyone knows about but no one mentions or wants to discuss, because it makes at least some of them uncomfortable or is politically embarrassing, controversial, inflammatory, or dangerous. I stopped by here today in all my white privilege, and by that, I mean that I've been pulled over several times in different cities for no taillights, no license plate lights, and not only did I never fear for my life, but I always got off with a warning and no ticket. So I want to talk about the elephant in the room that nobody's talking about until tonight, and that is the culture of white supremacy that is so pervasive and ingrained in our system that it would seem okay for a black police officer to stop a young black man on a pretext that he's a criminal and then proceed to beat another black man to death, thinking they'll get away with it because of their position in law enforcement. All the talk that I heard this morning about improving hiring and training is the assumption that we- that we have to weed out just a few bad apples. But I'm here to tell you that the problem is so deeply systemic and ingrained with anti-black racism and the viewpoint or belief that young black men are generally criminals. So, police training can't be the solution. It's gonna take a community-wide effort and change the legal system that makes money off of traffic tickets and keeps people in poverty. If you believe that poverty and crime are related, then we're perpetuating proper poverty through our traffic enforcement. We are legally keeping people in poverty and debt from tickets, fines, judgments, and incarceration. Pass item 32. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Josh Allen, Josh Adams, I'm sorry.
Good evening, Joshua Adams.
Good evening.
Address is 4750 Wood Ridge Drive, 38116. I do not believe that the policing, or that the police in any nature could be reconciled with the black community. The history shows that police work created out of the cult, out of the external culture of racism and used as a tool to keep black people under violent control. Black people, First Nation people or Indigenous people here in the United States, immigrants that were coming over, the police were used to brutalize and control those people politically. When people went to vote, the police would brutalize them. And so, I do not believe that the police can be reconciled. One thing that we ought to know historically, when we're making policy around policing, is we should have at some point decided to read Michelle Alexander's The New Jim Crow. In 1984, there was an operation called Operation Pipeline, which mandated that police officers use pretext traffic stops as a way of enforcing the war on drugs. This created, we all know, an extreme disparity in policing throughout the country, and those tactics are still used here locally, and they will continue to be used in many different forms, and so the racism will continue. What I'm interested in are the numbers. How racist is it? Are any of these disparities actionable in federal court? And how quickly can we defund the police? Thank you.
Thank you. I think that Mr., has Mr. Boda left? Okay. Ms. Chelsea Glass.
Hello, Chelsea Glass, 1350 Concourse Avenue. I have gone through six, nearly seven oxygen tanks today, because that's how important this is. Again, not the most like friendly disability setup, but, you know, I sat here all day, like all morning up until this moment, and I listened to the conversations that were had and the questions that were asked, and, I mean, at one point, I even like shouted out, because I could not contain myself. We have been doing this work for three years. We have talked to people all over this city. We have heard their experiences. We have our own experiences with traffic stops, police brutality, harassment. One thing that I just cannot seem to get past is that a lot of the questions that you have, there are people that, in this room, that have the answers. And, and quite unfortunately, the conversation that we're having is just to prevent from people from dying in the future. The problem is so much deeper than even the conversation we're having right now. This stuff runs deep. It is pervasive. This is about federal funding. This is about the cops office. I would like to know who in this room can tell me how many federal agents we have in Memphis and Shelby County? I want a number, a figure, just ballpark. Nobody knows, because it's designed that way. Did you know that we have at least 16 specialized units and task forces in Memphis and Shelby County? Did you know that? Anybody? No, because it is designed that way. We have spent our lives, the last three years, poring over this work to prevent people from dying, and we stood before y'all a month ago, and we could have prevented another life. We have watched people die at the hands of police over and over and over again, and Tyree's life could have been saved if people listened to the conversations that we have been having for a very long time. So, I hope that if nothing else, our friend Daniel Boda, who flew all the way from New York to legitimize our work, you'll start listening to us, you'll start taking us seriously, you'll invite us to the conversation, you'll make sure that we're at the table when these conversations are being had, because I've listened to Chief Davis. Sit up here and watch your faces, and I have proof. I have evidence.
Ms. Glass, thank you for your comment. We need to get to the next person. Our next commenter is gonna be Gillian Wenhold.
Gillian Wenhold, 683 North Idlewild Street, 38107. Just want to say thank y'all for, I guess preemptively, thank you for passing this ordinance, but I want to make sure that it doesn't stop here, that y'all keep, keep going, that you pass all of the ordinances that Decarcerate Memphis hands to y'all in the language that they send over. And, you know, a lot of people who are smarter than me, have been doing this a lot longer than me, keep telling y'all that this, this politics game that keeps being played is not, it's not the way to go. Like, we've heard conversation about this issue being about funding or about more training, and that's not it. You know, we don't need more training, we don't need to continue to codify the will of the oppressor through these like little things, right? This goes all the way, all the way back, through stop and frisk, through slavery, through the genocide and forced removal of Indigenous people who lived on this land, and it's not enough to just keep passing these little things and doing the, the PR stunts, the stuff that makes you look good. But we need to listen to the community and actually meet the demands and keep going past that, because this entire system, it's built, it's been built, and it's racism, white supremacy is in the fabric of the entire society. So, we can't just do this one or two things. We need to keep pushing when the media leaves, when the cameras go away, and it's still the community who's here, and you need to listen to them and continue doing things.
Thank you. Colleagues, that was the last of our comment cards. Seeing no council members in the queue to speak on this item, Madam Controller, would you? Do you have, number, what's your name? Okay, well, yeah. Yeah, yeah. So, so for future reference, once I get the card, I hand it over. So, if you want to speak on two items, I need two cards. Okay.
Thank you. I appreciate that. This is Adam Nelson, 1624 Faxton Avenue. Earlier, I shared the story of Jordan, who was hounded for years by MPD over non-safety infractions. Jordan's story is depressingly typical. We know this because Decarcerate Memphis spent hundreds of volunteer hours examining five years of MPD traffic tickets. Black drivers receive almost 80% of traffic citations, half of which are for safety. Citations to white drivers, by contrast, are about 75% for safety, revealing one way that drivers like me are treated differently by the color of our skin. When we rank violations by the percentage that go to white drivers, guess which violation is the whitest of them all? Officer dismissal request, in which the officer recommends the ticket be dropped. Obtaining this data was extremely slow and laborious. The public records request took 41 days, enough time for almost 9,500 black drivers to get ticketed. We don't know how many were pulled over in that time, because MPD does not track stops. We don't know what happened in 2022, unless we do another request and more hours of analysis. We don't know how many stops resulted in searches, seizures, arrests, or violence. We don't know where the stops occur, we don't know what benefit, if any, these stops generate. MPD proposes to spend over $250 million this year. The police budget is as opaque as their activities, but if national trends suggest that 42% of MPD's public contact is traffic stops, 42% of $250 million is $105 million. We need to know what we are getting for our money. Pass data transparency, so that we can know how many people have experiences like Jordan or worse, like Tyree Nichols. Thank you.
Thank you. That brings us to the vote on this item. Seeing no other members in the queue to speak on it, Madam Controller, will you please prepare the screens for the vote?
Canali, yes. Carlisle, yes. Call that, yes. Esther Thomas, yes. Ford, yes. Johnson, yes. Logan, yes. Morgan, yes. Vice Chairman Smiley, yes. Swerengen, Washington, yes. Warren, yes. Chairman Jones, yes.
That item passes. That brings us to our same night minutes. Vice Chair Smiley, will you please read the same night minutes into the record?
I think I was too excited. That, uh, okay, I'll read it, y'all. Once again, before I read these sentiments, thank each and every one of you for showing up. I truly believe that your presence has made a huge difference. It's not easy pushing reforms, and when y'all show up, I promise you, it makes a difference. So, thank each and every one of you. Same night items are 10, 11, 12, 21, 22, 23, 24, 25, and 26. And I so move.
Our same night minute items have been moved by Vice Chair Smiley, seconded by Councilman Carlisle. Seeing no members in the queue to speak on this item, Madam Controller, will you please prepare the screens for the vote?
Canali, yes. Carlisle, yes. Call that, yes. Esther Thomas, yes. Ford, yes. Johnson, yes. Logan, yes. Morgan, yes. Vice Chairman Smiley, yes. Swerengen, Washington, yes. Warren, yes. Chairman Jones, yes.
That item passes. That brings us to the section of our meetings where we hear from pu, uh, public, general public comments. Before I call the first person, though, you know, this has been a long day for us all, but I still wanted to say thank you for coming down. You know, I, I know that this is a very emotional time for all of us. We still have a, a ways to go. As I mentioned earlier, this is the beginning, this is not the end. There might be changes that we're gonna have to make going forward, but I still ask, I still beg you to still be engaged. We're doing your work, and I ask you to, you know, to please hold us accountable, please hold us responsible in doing so. So, our first comment card is for Mr. Gilbert Carter. Ms. Carter.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Gilbert Barnes Carter III, 37 West Waldorf Avenue, 38109. I want to first acknowledge two amazing groups of people. I would be remiss if I did not acknowledge the Nichols and Wells family for their resilience and strength during this very dark time in our city's history. And secondly, I want to also acknowledge all of the activists, change agents, disruptors, good troublemakers, hell raisers. Across all of our allied social justice organizations, and for the record, I stand in solidarity with Decarcerate Memphis, Official Black Lives Matter Memphis Chapter, and all other allied organizations and groups who are on the right side of history, who continuously and tirelessly fight for social justice, not just here in our beloved city, but all across this country. I don't believe in redundancy. So much has been said by so many amazing people here in this council chamber tonight. I will say this, as we prepare to leave, there are many other names that we are still gonna call out, make no mistake about it. Many more names of black brothers and sisters who have fallen victim to the impunity, the wickedness of state sanctioned violence. Stephen Askew, we're gonna continue to say his name. Martavius Banks, we're gonna continue to say his name. Darius Stewart. Make no mistake about it, we're going to continue to say their names, we're gonna push for justice, and in relation to Darius, when DA Mulroy decides to reopen that case, we're gonna be front and center. Connor Shilling deserves to be in prison. So, my time is up. Thank you, and lastly, all power to the people.
Thank you, Ms. Carter. Mr. Damon Curry Morris.
Damon Curry Morris, 1529 Dunmore Road, Memphis, C38114. We've heard a lot of things from a lot of people, and I'm tired, just like y'all tired, y'all. You know, I'm, I'm, I'm gonna sum this up, because some people was trying to hit it, but they wouldn't hit it correctly. I'm not trying to step on anyone's toes, but you cannot and you will not reform a system that was put in place to do exactly what it's doing. So, I've bought, and y'all know this ain't about me, it's always about the people with me, okay? Councilman Jones, Councilman Smiley, we've had several conversations, and what is the first thing that I can say when I, when I come to you all? There's people in this street out here suffering, okay? I have with me tonight, Ms. Irene Douglas. Many of you don't know her, because her story didn't get a lot of media attention. This is the mother of the young lady that was killed in the Uber Eats shooting. This lady has went several months, and if you all will sit down and hear her story, you will understand, and I'm gonna give you a piece of it, how she walked into the medical examiner's office, and her daughter was on a table laid open, and all her organs had been removed. No one had helped her. She went and shut down I-240, and she was placed in jail. No one has helped her. She's been battling court cases and everything else. I just want to see y'all to look in the eyes of the people. This is what I do every day, the eyes of the people. When people can't get y'all, they said, they send y'all emails and everything like that, and y'all haven't responded, guess who they call? Me. Because they know I'm gonna stand up and I'm gonna say something, whether you like it or you don't, okay? Because one thing is constant with me, the truth was not designed to make you feel good. Y'all have a good evening.
Thank you, sir. Next, we have Lisa Moll. Next, we have Lisa Moll. Lisa Moll. Next comment card is from Joshua Adams.
Joshua Adams, Decarcerate Memphis, uh, sorry, my address is forty-seven-fifty Wood Ridge Drive, uh, three-eight-one-one-six, um, Representative Decarcerate Memphis in the Official Black Lives Matter Memphis Chapter. Cheyenne Johnson, this morning, you made a remark that I think that you don't understand how oppressive it was. You said that the city is bleeding, but it's gonna have to bleed a little bit longer. And I don't know who you think is gonna do their bleeding, but I can tell you what brought Tyree to be bleeding, and so many others. And same as Worth Morgan did, similar to what Chief Davis did in their language, is that they coupled two things that had nothing to do with each other, and those things were violent crime and reckless driving. Those two things are not the same thing. When they coupled those things together, uh, what ended up happening was that the police were given a programming, and they knew that they could treat certain people who were driving a certain way with a certain level of violence and disregard for their lives to make them bleed. And Worth Morgan, you asked the question, why doesn't it happen to you? And those were in the words of your police chief when we presented on December the sixth. One of her responses was that we have crime nestled in certain neighborhoods, and I don't think they pull over middle-aged white men in white neighborhoods, assuming that they're gonna be committing crimes. And so, the thing that I wanna say is that this, again, cannot be reformed. I'm not interested in reform, I'm not interested in training, I'm not interested in culture building, unless they're gonna take a race and politics class and pass it and do all the papers, no easy stuff. I'm interested in the numbers. How many people you think gotta bleed, Ms. Johnson? I'm interested in the numbers, because I wanna know how bad the problem is, and how much more you think we can take. Have a good evening.
Our next comment card is from Aaron Lewis.
Hello, Mr. Jones, how you doing?
Hi there.
Um, I have a inquiry into parliamentary procedure. If I were to ask for a non-verbal poll from the council, is that something you would interrupt?
No, so you can, uh, please state your name and address for the record.
For sure, for sure, okay.
And then you can begin your comments.
For sure. My name is, uh, Aaron Lewis, I live at thirty-eight-twenty Trish Hills Cove, Memphis, Tennessee, three-eight-one-two-eight. Um, hello, Dr. Warren. Hello, Michael. So, my question is, in order to establish whether this is a safe space for me, is there anyone on this council that operates under the belief or assumption knows to be true that so-called black folks in Memphis are not inherently violent? By show of hands?
You have to say the double negative.
Um, so, yeah, well, let me, let me try to clear it up. I'm, 'cause I'm trying to make sure I feel safe enough to, for my two sentences, 'cause that's all I really have to share.
You're safe.
Huh?
You're safe.
I'm not convinced of that, though.
You're safe.
Is there anyone that thinks, uh, on the council, I won't do the negatives, please, is there anyone on this council that thinks that so-called black folks are inherently As a matter of just them being born into this world? You sure? No one? I find, I do find it hard to believe, but if no one raised their hands, then I think I feel safe enough to continue. Two-hundred-seventy-five million dollars is a whole lot of money, and if two-hundred-seventy-five million dollars isn't enough money to have any effective change in violence in our community, then perhaps it's not a matter of more, for sure, and perhaps it's a matter of less and a different use of that. Now, I stand to think that violence in America, and especially a place like Memphis, derives, violence is, is, is a symptom of not having access to resources. And I'd like to believe that even if that budget was cut in half, 'cause I don't know this to be true, I don't have anything, any data available, but I like to think that if I, if that was cut in half and a hundred-and-forty million dollars was dispersed among so-called black folks in Memphis, given what we know to be the racial wealth disparity here, that that would have a lot more impact in reducing violence. If I could make, if I could automatically make a hundred-and-forty black millionaires every year without having to compete, without having to participate in the economy, just based on a redirection of fund, and I'm done.
Mr. Lewis? Okay, thank you, sir. Ms., Ms. Abraham, LJ Abraham?
I'm good, I got y'all that time.
Okay. Cedric Johnson? Cedric Johnson?
I'm John.
Ann Adams?
Ann Adams, one-seventy-two Temple Street, three-eight-one-zero-nine. Once more, I become, I come before you all tonight. This time, I wanna speak to you. As someone who remembers what it's like to be young, as someone who knows what it's like to be a law-abiding citizen, to work within the law, and yet not desire to be stopped by the police, Mr. Morgan. And as a mother, there are areas that need to be addressed by stopping police officers from issuing ticket citations, period. The PST officers need to be the ones doing that job. Every police officer needs to be required to have two years in service as a PST officer without a weapon. It gives you an opportunity to see their customer service skills. My heart goes out to Tyree Nichols' mother. Difficult for me to say his name, because every time I think about him, I cry and I think about my own child. As a mother, who shortly before that incident had the police in my front yard, in my car, no one called them, I live on a dead-end street, they were coming up towards the car where my only child was sitting with his head down, playing video games, and until I stepped out there on that porch and asked the question, what's the problem? How can I help you? I have no idea what the intended fate was for my son, because the police officer retreated. In my neighborhood, I got pulled over because my window was down on my car. No other reason, Mr. Morgan, law-abiding citizen. Just because my window was down. So, your experience will never, ever be anything like mine. I was born black.
Ms. Adams.
I will die black, but I don't wanna be murdered just because I am black, and I don't want that fate for my son or any other brown-skinned...
Latonya Blankenship.
Well, my conversation with you will not be about the, um, Tyree Nichols and the amendments. It's about being here on behalf of the students of District Four. We have a circus that's in District Four that our children cannot even afford to go to. The tickets are forty-seven dollars apiece. How do you expect our children to even dream or think better or just explore different things when they can't even afford to go to the circus that is in their district? Martavis, I, I, you know how I feel about the children. And we're no babies. See, Ms. Blankenship, why can't I go to the circus? Do you know how much that costs? Because they cannot afford to go to the circus that's in their neighborhood. I had a former student who called me yesterday. Her and her partner and her daughter went, they spent three-hundred dollars to go to a circus. A circus when I was younger, and it used to be right there by Cherokee Bowl in the alley. Tickets were twenty dollars. Twenty! Just imagine, if the tickets were like twenty dollars now, ten. So, whoever made that contract with this old circus, and I, I, I don't have anything against them, but please, next time, make sure it's affordable for everybody. Thank you.
First, I was here all morning, and today is a special day for me, because it's my son, deceased son birthday. So, you know, this gotta be very important to me, people. I, I, I listened to CJ and the fire chief this morning, and, and for the fire department, when I was a little, I'm forty-nine, I've always looked up and respected the firemen's here, because they do a great job. I don't know anybody who can go in, I ain't going in a burning house. So, I've always looked up to them and to see that they stood by and did nothing. And, and they stood up here today before all of you and lied. They made excuses, that's what they did. And we all blame CJ, but I guarantee you, who run our city? Mayor Strickland. I ain't heard nobody got on his head, but I'm here today to get on. See, we need folk that care about us folk. He doesn't care about anything but making our city look pretty. We don't need that, 'cause see, one thing about it, people, ain't nobody gonna come to sit Memphis if our crime is like it is. Who wanna come? Our citizens here, we barely wanna be here, and I myself, I'm forced to be here. But, boy, when I say, and these, and I'm not gonna be naming our folk up here, but I got a few I want to, uh, on the bad side and on the good side, but just know, we, look at y'all, facial expressions, it speaks volume. Your demeanor, it speaks volume. And just know, see, I can't vote, and that's a long story on another thing, but I tell you one thing, I know so many folk that can. And when I speak, I got a big mouth. You better ask them about Mayor J L East. I got a big mouth, and I speak, and when I speak, they listen. So, I'mma tell you, I'mma load up a bus, and we gonna vote. It ain't gonna be me, but we watching each and every one of y'all, so we know who gonna be back in office come January, the, the first of next, the twenty-fourth, a lot of y'all won't be sitting right here, I guarantee you. And, and, and I'm finna go, but, uh, we need to get Strickland out of here for one. Ever since he's been here, this city been destroyed. Let me thank my folk before I go, then, sir.
Ma'am, ma'am.
I want to thank you, Mr. Smiley.
Our next person, Michael Patterson.
Let's not speak on the commission.
Ma, Michael Patterson.
Kudos to y'all, 'cause y'all for us, baby.
Lisa Bennett. Lisa Bennett.
We need some folk that care about us, and baby, kudos to you.
Lisa Bennett.
Kudos to you. Bless you. And y'all, too, bless y'all, but all these other ladies, too. And watch y'all, and you don't get any attention, you, you have good beer. And no, it don't happen just to you, it happen to J L East, too. Give me my paper, baby. Give me my paper, ma. It don't get happen to J L East, too. Y'all set up there and gave them all that money for a new roof. That John Binko, though, you better go check out J L East. Some of y'all don't like you to go sit up in there. Small baby, where roaches.
Ms. Bennett.
Y'all, baby, my all that money to fix a room. Ooh. So, people, for me, the money's okay. If y'all keep giving them money, they fix it. You come to ours.
Lisa D. Bennett, forty-three-twenty-one Royal Palace Cove, three-eight-one-two-eight. I'd like to speak to a couple of things. Number one, I know this has already been stated, but I just wanna add my own anecdote to the statement made by, uh, councilperson Morgan. I, a decade ago, was stopped by a police officer on my way home from a night out with my girlfriends, and I stopped at a gas station because my high schooler stu-, uh, son asked me to pick him up some M&Ms, and so I did. And as I left the gas station, a police car followed me, pulled me over, and that police officer asked me a few personal, very personal questions, and he didn't let me leave until I said I gotta get home to my husband. I've never been married. The only male at that house was my high school son. That happened over a decade ago, and I'll never, ever forget it. That happened to me as a black woman, and I know we're talking about, uh, some very serious issues here with the murder of Tyree Nichols, but it's those everyday little things that lead up to the murder of a citizen like Tyree Nichols. Now, I watch city council, uh, committee and council meetings online, and one thing that I've noticed is when nonprofits come before you all, they have to come with the PowerPoint that has the goals, uh, the metrics they're using to attain their goals, what data, how this dollar is being used. But when MPD comes and other departments come, they can come up here and finesse, y'all. They never answer your questions, they don't come with specific data or metrics either, yet they get the money that they want every time. That's unacceptable, y'all. So, if these little nonprofits gotta come beg for five thousand dollars, then MPD needs to come with their data to beg for their forty-two percent of the budget. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Walter Brody.
My name is Walter Brody. I stay at forty-two-fifty-six in that Better Cove. Oh, man, we need Jesus right now. You know, uh, I hear a lot of people talk about the police and, uh, you know, a lot of criticism. I say this, uh, when you had a Holy Spirit, the Holy Spirit would, would guide you, and when it guided you, it would, it would guide you to do the right thing. Now, you know, I would, I told my nephews and my brothers-in-law how you deal with the police cops, and I told them, I said, I said, uh, give them respect, pray for them, and, uh, be humble when, when they, when they pull you over, whatever, if you do them right or wrong. When I get out of bed each and every day, I plead the blood of Jesus. When I get out of bed each and every day, I plead the blood of Jesus over my family. I plead the blood of Jesus over the police. I plead the blood of Jesus over all our leaders. See, I ain't got time to be having the devil inside of me, try to dictate different things, make me do crazy stuff. I'm giving everybody respect. God hold me accountable, not only holding y'all accountable or the police accountable, guess who we're holding accountable? Y'all too. God holding all of y'all accountable. So, we got to go and do the right thing. Let's show respect, love, peace, and pray for our leaders. Pray for the police, not all of them bad. You see what I'm saying? So, you know, I can't, I don't, I can't have the devil inside of my soul. Because I see the devil, I'm, I'm looking to go to heaven. I ain't looking to go to hell. So, I'm just, I just thank God for everything. I'm putting God off in this and, uh, let's just go and pray right now, shall we? Now, I'm gonna have a, a whole thirty minutes. Say, my Lord, rebuke you. Thank you, Lord, for everything, Father God. Father God, thankful you allowed me to come down here. Father God, continue bless all our leaders, all our, all our police department, bless our, both our mayors, bless the Sheriff County Commission, Father God. Continue to give wisdom and knowledge to all our leaders, like the city council, Father God, and the chair. Father God, bless, bless everybody in the city, this state, this country, and all around the world. Father God, bless all the people who came here today and voiced their opinion. Father God, cleanse us from all unrighteousness, our nicety, our transgression. Father God, we thank you in the mighty name of Jesus. Amen and amen.
Councilwoman Swearingen, Washington?
Thank you. I just wanted to, uh, offer a point of clarification with the circus. All of the tickets are not forty-seven dollars. They have some for twenty-four, twenty-eight, fifty, thirty-three dollars, forty-seven dollars. Um, the circus has been gracious enough to allow some tickets for those children who are not able to attend, so I would like to get with you and my staff and we will work to make sure that some tickets are available for those children who want the opportunity to go. Sure, just talk with my staff. We'll be more than happy to get with you after the meeting.
Thank you. Next. Okay, if there's no objection, this is.